And as is our custom, we'll begin with the moments of fact reflection. Mrs. Gwante, would you call the roll? Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milko?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Spee?
Yes.
We begin our evening with public comments on non-agenda items. Members of the Wamatoosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's very early scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this information in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comments on each item to three minutes. Following any comments, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intention of the Public Comment Portion of the Agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. If there's anyone present who would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item, please approach the microphone now, please state your name and address prior to making your comment. If there's no public comments at this time, we'll move to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion or action? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So, thank you, Mr. Randall. Thank you, Mr. Milko. Is there any discussion? I should note that the check register is present if anyone wishes to examine it. And with that, is there any further discussion or question of the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any public comments on the consent agenda? Mrs. Gwante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milko?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Yes. Can I bring Mr. Recognitions? At our November 9th board meeting, three Wamatoosa East students were recognized for placing first, second, and third in the Wamatoosa Veterans of the Four Wars Annual Voice for Democracy Speech Contest. The Board requests seniors Dylan Kessinger and Nate Disinger will present their speeches tonight. I would note that Mr. Isolow is unable to attend tonight due to a work obligation. So, potentially, would you please approach the microphone or allow me to hear your speeches?
Hello? Hello? This is Nathan Disinger, senior at Wamatoosa East High School. I'd like to thank you all for the honor and the right me to read my DFW speech today. And I suppose I'd just like to begin with that. The theme of this year's Voice for Democracy Speech Contest was, "Does America Still Have Heroes?" There are three points we must address if we're going to answer the question, "Does America Still Have Heroes?" First of all, America itself. Are we talking about society's heroes or the heroes of the individual? Second, heroes, what is a hero? Well, I'm sure there's a lot of things. Not only extreme devotion, admiration, a man invited for his achievements and other qualities, one that shows great courage. These definitions are essentially empty without being viewed through the eyes of one observing a hero. And finally, and most importantly, still, what sort of social turmoil has driven us to ask this question in the first place? Surely, America has not suddenly resulted self-deafly, impacting society that has no watch or need of heroes? You might be tempted to say this isn't the case. Turn on the news, and you'll see no under political monthly and violent arguments people on any side of the debate will make today. In such a climate, it would be easy to consider America as a nation of drift, one so obsessed with spectacle and dragging itself down that it has no desire for heroes. But I ask in response, what other situation would need heroes more? We might turn on the television and listen to Bill Clinton here had cradled her way about whatever is destroying America today in his opinion. But every time we turn on the TV, aren't we hoping for someone doing just the opposite? Someone who can find themselves by their actions and not by dragging down those of others? This is no hypothetical situation. America has come to unite when such these heroes unexpectedly arise. I do not explain the deeds of Captain Chelsea Solenberger. Instead, I'll sit there for one of the fact that his actions assert the usual political decorum, an unformed debate on the news channels. The media, it seems, was holding out hope for something positive as much as the rest of us were. Unless the exception to the rule, you may argue, of course, we want to see Captain Solenberger as a hero. Of course, we'll happily promote the idea to the news. And perhaps you would be right. It's often rare for some of the kind of law to just unite the nation without instant their actions, but who says all heroes have to be such superheroes? Ask someone, anyone on the street. Do you respect our troops? Not do you support the war in Iraq and Afghanistan? Not do you support our troops' actions? But rather simply, do you respect our troops? Do you respect the fact they are putting their lives at risk for our nation regardless of the cost? You will be hard pressed to find someone who will say no to a question like that. And then, of course, you must ask, what about heroes that don't get the media on the bridge? In every city, every neighborhood, they'll never be nationally known. Their names will never filter through the internet. Their faces will never make the cover of the newsweek. But they're there nonetheless. Their actions are as varied as their faces and their supporters. A black surgeon who lives alive while his baby by cesarean section, the birth goes wrong. An uneducated janitor who pulls a teenager from a car wreck. These heroes almost receive a quick nod in their local newspapers as a human interest story, perhaps. But here's when the amazing thing happens. Those people may not be national idols. Every person in America somehow knows them. Everyone is familiar with at least one tale of way of someone going out there and helping or simply working here on his own. They're an ideal much closer to home than even the soldiers. They are America and its best, one of every nation aspires to be, a collection of people who are worth the matter of themselves and the world regardless of the cost. Wanting to back to my original problem with this year's statement, still have heroes? Why do we need to ask such a question? Perhaps if not, we have been Solenberger in the news every day. Perhaps we thank you so much over who's that captain's fellow heroes. But the common sense that America's moral fiber is decaying is patently false. America's heroes are far more numerous on the individual level rather than national. They advocate of something extraordinary to the skies where America lies. We recognize them, even we reveal them, even if we don't simply protect them through the same sort of media works that we will have suddenly decorated politicians. Of course, that might actually be a question for that. The national idol, I've seen few and quite a few, in our eyes, in the eyes of everybody and I don't think exists.
Hi, I'm Dylan Kessinger, also a senior at Wamatoosa East High School. Like once again, thank you all for letting us, inviting us to present our speeches here. Let's all go. When my teacher first told me about the speech contest, he told me that the question asked whether America still had heroes. I immediately started thinking back to all the heroes I've ever had. When I was very little, I would have said Superman, or Batman, or the Green Ranger, who was always my favorite power ranger. They were all figures who were superhuman. They did things that no one else could. They were all perfect people. But as I grew older, I started to realize that doing extraordinary things isn't all that impressive if you're a perfect person. Sure, Superman can fight crime and fund up supervillains, but it's probably not too hard when you're faster than a speeding bullet and more powerful than a locomotive. When I was 11 years old and the 9/11 terrorist attacks happened, there was a lot of emphasis on how heroic the policemen and firefighters of America are. And for a short time, I may have said that they were my heroes, but that never seemed to stick. When I was in middle school, I probably would have said that my hero was Gandhi or Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I started to appreciate real people who had done amazing things and changed the world. These men were heroic because they were so ordinary, but did so much to improve the world, even in the face of life-threatening danger. Dr. King didn't have super strength. Gandhi didn't have high-tech gadgets that it just drove with. They were just men who did what was right. They were all people who made great things to be possible forever. In short, they were real. Now, as I'm about to graduate from high school and enter the so-called real world, I realize that my heroes are all people I know. They're not superhuman or legendary earth-changing figures. They're just people who've changed my life in a positive way. Really, that's why they're my heroes. Superman may have saved the world in the comic books, but my 10th grade math teacher would open the school for me at 6:00 a.m., before anybody else was in the building, taught me with my math because I had a zero-hour jazz class, completed with the strength and energy of one man. Dr. King may have ended segregation in the South during the Civil Rights Movement. My mother finds a way to be the best mom I could ever ask for while dealing with severe Crohn's disease every day, here and now. The heroes of America aren't superheroes or historical figures or even famous celebrities. America's heroes are normal people who can do amazing things. They're single parents who work two jobs and still find time to help their kids with homework. They're teachers who connect with their students or their before and after school to help them. They're older siblings who encourage us and share their wisdom with us. They're friends and relatives who help us through hard times, even when we can't help ourselves. They're people who have the courage, the work ethic, the commitment, and the common sense to do what we all know is right, and we all hope to be able to do ourselves. They are heroes not because they do this with superpowers or the support of millions, but because they do so thanklessly and with the strength and energy of ordinary people. These are America's heroes. Those who set the standard for how we should all go about our lives. They are perfect people, but God knows, we're not either. And if they can do these amazing heroic things, even with all of their flaws, then maybe we can too. Thank you.
Thank both of you for coming tonight, taking time out of your busy days, I'm sure, to come and present these to us. They're very well-deposed and thought-provoking, and we do appreciate them very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
I get to read a recognition for another teacher that went above and beyond for something special in her profession. The development of secondary teachers, Stephanie Dalton, has earned National Board Certification from the National Board for Professional Teaching Champions, NVPTX. National Board Certification is part of the growing educational reform movement that is advancing student learning, improving teaching, and making schools better. Teachers who achieve National Board Certification have met high standards in study, expert evaluation, self-assessment, and therapy. Dalton is a 15th teacher from the Wamatoosa School District to earn National Board Certification. NVPTX is an independent, nonprofit, nonpartisan, and non-governmental organization. It was formed in 1987 to advance the quality of teaching and learning by developing professional standards for accomplished teaching, creating a voluntary system for certified teachers to meet those standards, and integrating certified teachers into educational performance.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to Stephanie Dalton. Let's bring to our action items this evening, beginning with opening the ground. Mr. Ray?
It is recommended that the School Board approve and place on file the proposed capital maintenance improvement plan for the 2010-2011 school year, with individual projects to be approved by the School Board throughout the year, as was presented and discussed at the December 14th board meeting.
Mr. McRae? Is there any forward question or discussion? Any comment? Stephen, Mrs. Gwante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milko?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
The next item is business services. Mr. Meyer?
It is recommended that the School Board approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the State of Wisconsin and the Wamatoosa School District to establish a framework of collaboration in support of the state in its implementation of an approved Race to the Top grant. If Wisconsin is awarded Race to the Top grant funds, the district will have nine days to finalize their work plan and submit to the state for their Race to the Top funds or withdraw from the Memorandum of Understanding and forgo their local award and participation in the Race to the Top program without penalty or further commitment, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Before we begin board discussion, I believe Dr. Earl would like to make a comment.
The Race to the Top information, I know the Board has received two different documents. One was from December, and the other one, I don't see the document from, from January from the Department of Federal Construction. Currently, the state is working on their application for these funds, and one of the deadlines is this January 13th, that we have a sign Memorandum of Understanding if we want to participate in the funding or in the grant project. I look at the situation right now, and the reason I'm recommending it without basically having, we just don't have enough information to create any kind of grant proposal or to be prepared to go to the state with a plan. They've laid out some of the framework, but I think it continues to change. And my recommendation is based on being part of the process and being able to make a decision later whether or not, as a district, we choose to participate in basically a placeholder so that we're not held out. Because if we don't sign a Memorandum of Understanding by January 50, we're done. There's no future opportunities. And I, my recommendation is based on the opportunity to get the final regulations, be able to pair a grant if we so choose, and make decisions based on the final regulations of that.
Forward question, Mr. McRae? If we follow the guidelines to this point and extent, what benefit does this do for our school district? How can this improve what we are doing?
Well, if it's left up to our interpretation, I think there's many things that we are doing we can improve upon, whether it's creating an administrative mentor program, enhancing a teacher-mentor program. There's also the relationship with standards, including the use of data, the use of data for instruction. There's a lot of things that could help us. There's also, there's a risk that things could hamper us. The problem is, we just don't know yet. I mean, as I look through it, I think there's a lot of things that could be positive and that we could work on, but like I said, the problem is, we don't know. I think on the opposite side, there's more of the federal government getting involved in a state issue, which is education. And while national standards may be a good thing, the federal government is tying more of our funding to different things we're required to do, that could be problematic. I see it from what I know right now and the information we have, that it could be a positive. But again, all the regulations, all the things we're required to do, and all the strings attached to the money, we don't know. And that second, if you notice, in the second, they've changed the secondary funding mechanism from $50 per student to a $19 million competitive grant project. So, we'd have to create another grant, prepare another grant application to be eligible for the additional $19 million dollars for the state. The other big base, we don't know if the state's even going to be funded as well. But the problem is, we're under a timeline, the state doesn't hold it upon us, and we just don't have enough information to know all the answers.
There are so many unknowns in this, but I also vouch and support this. Our district is doing a great deal, and I remember our staff is working very hard to meet all the proposals, the guidelines. There's a lot going on in Wamatoosa, and I'm not sure this is going to help in any way to meet some of the things that we want to do. There's great deal required, and again, I'll receive a lot of unknowns. So, I await any further comments when the fellow board members on this, and certainly appreciate any statements from our administration. The Board members, Mr. Meyer?
It seems to me that the resolution allows us to opt out once we learn more about this. Does that apply? Do you agree with any interpretation? So, as we learn more, we could decide to stop our participation before we have a lot of time invested in it. This keeps our options open, I believe.
Mrs. Randall? I have a couple of questions, and they may be too specific based on what we can say as far as what we know. But looking at the exhibit one, I think this is the same hard copy that we have with the child, for instance. Under Standards and Assessments, number one, it says, "Implement a curriculum aligned to the Common Core standards in reading, English, Language Arts, and Mathematics." My question, that would be, the Common Core standards, are they referring to the existing state standards?
No.
This would be a new standard?
Common Core standards are, there are right now 48 states that have agreed on to participate in developments of Common Core standards, and they're anticipating that all states would be on board with that, and that'd be part of, we have to see what those Common Core standards are, and that would be part of the guidelines for this. So, it's not what we have existing, but it's the new Core standards. I don't know that they could differ greatly from what we have at this time.
So, would our only incentive from your point of view to go to the Core Common Standards be because of the additional funding or the Race to the Top?
Oh, I think that we need to be, the Common Core standards are something that we need to be aware of and know more about, regardless of if we participate in this or not. If, you know, we have 48 states that are already agreeing to come up with Common Core standards, it has a lot to do with linking that to school accountability. So, I think it's in our best interest to be very aware of what those Common Core standards are, and look at those in comparison to what standards we currently have in place.
But according to this, if we accept the funds, then we are going to be accepting these Common Core standards as part of that. That's how it works. Okay. The other question is, the funds that we receive, and there are some really good things here, things that we've been talking about and working on, and in some cases are in the process of doing, you know, the evaluations, teacher and principal evaluations, that type of thing. If we were to receive this grant money, would those funds, do you think, be limited to implementing all of this, or do we know how we would be allowed to?
They would be limited, and you cannot supply, so in other words, you can't ship dollars and pay for something we're already doing. It's got to be above and beyond. It's similar to the stimulus money, and it's challenging because when you look at a school district that has a budget of 80% to 82% paying for people, you're getting new money that can pay for materials, goods, one-time expenditures. You don't want to use those dollars to fund something that's going to be ongoing unless it's a short-term employee or consultant-type program, but it's somewhat challenging if all those dollars are used.
And how do you anticipate, moving forward, if we do accept this, then what kind of support do you anticipate in getting all the things?
Well, I would be expecting the DPI would be given us clear directives on grant proposal, and we can evaluate at that time, bring it back to the Board for further consideration. And I think then it's worth investing some of the time to look and see each bullet, whether or not we're able to meet it, whether or not we currently are, and how would we use the funds to meet those that we're not, or to enhance the ones that we're already doing.
And I do share some of Mrs. Weber's concerns, you know, that there's always this money put out there, and then, you know, somebody else is supplying us how to use it. And she also, we've been working hard here on initiatives and getting the right people in place to get things done and so on. But if we can get, obviously, financial assistance to move forward in the way that we know is the best for us, based on what we've already done, so I understand what you're saying. But I think the fact that if we aren't getting the answers that we need, then it would be time to opt out. I don't see at this point, you know, that it would be a problem approving it, but certainly we need to know that somebody is going to be assuring, excuse me, assuring us that these are going to be quality changes, not just changes.
Mr. Ray?
I agree that I think at this point in time, it makes sense to move forward in a way that would allow us to continue to have the option to participate in this program. I also agree that there is some wisdom moving forward with kind of like a yellow light in our windshield, of being cautionary about whether we approve the next step, and I'm guessing there would be a secondary approval process if we go back to the Board before we move forward to the next step. But, and I also had some questions about this concept of the Common Core standards that Mrs. Randall just alluded to. And Mrs. Aaronberger, what you said is, it intrigued me because you suggested, unless I heard you incorrectly, that the Common Core standards are an idea right now, but they're not in place. Is that correct, or are they in fact defined and in place?
There is a meeting on February 19th in Madison that is a collaborative effort between the DPI. The information will be disseminated on the Common Core standards, and we'll know more about those and what they are. And there'll be three organizations representing, there'll be the DPI, the State Association for Curriculum and Destruction, and an organization representing the Common Core standards. So, we'll know more on the 19th about, and the 21st century standards will also be part of that discussion. So, there'll be people present sharing at the state level what those Common Core standards are in relation to the 21st century and how that plays out for Wisconsin.
You said there's 48 states that are sort of committed to that.
Forty-eight states have currently committed to the Common Core standards.
Is Wisconsin the one of them?
Yes.
Correct. I think it's one of the reasons why I think it makes sense to be somewhat cautionary moving forward, is if there isn't a whole comprehensive set of ideals or information that's available yet as to what the Common Core standards are. It's hard to say that you'll agree to abide by them with or not clarity at the moment as to what they're going to be. So, I think that's one thing that we obviously want to come to in our sights as this would move forward. I would be in favor of moving forward with it for the time being with the understanding that we have to revisit this issue again before we make a final decision.
Mr. Carter?
I just have a question. I noticed that this document requires local teachers' union leader to sign. Have they already agreed that they want to be forward with this?
It is not, actually, the requirement is just one of the three. So, you have either the superintendent, either the School Board, or, what came back to us is you need one of three to sign it. All three would be, it would be wonderful. My approach is that we've shared it with the association, and I was going to follow up and see if there's interest in signing it after that.
Any comments, Mr. McRae?
No.
All right. I, before we take any comment in the vote, I have to say that I can't... can't support this for a couple of reasons. One of which has been mentioned by a number of people here, which is the uncertainty. And I think that we have uncertainty not only with the curriculum, but with what this is going to require us to do with evaluations, with assessments, with basically every instructional aspect of this district. There's an unknown as to what we may be required to do. And we're willing to go ahead with that for the possibility of four hundred thousand dollars, which I find troubling. I mean, that's the number that they could offer now. Of course, we don't know that that's the actual number, because we don't know how much the state will be awarded total. We don't know how it will be ultimately divided, and they've already changed it at least once, that I'm aware of. So, that, even that amount is an unknown. But the bigger picture for me is that I think that this takes us even further down the road to a lack of local control for school districts, and that's something I cannot support. I'm not so naive as to think that we actually, on our own school district, the state and the fed tells us what to do and many fronts, but this is only going to put that foot much further through the door, and I'm thinking I can't support it. So, I will not be putting it as far as this option. In fact, most of the board comments, but are there any community comments on this action? Oh, I'm sorry.
So, a follow-up on the point that was just made by the president. On reflection, it seems to me that four hundred thousand dollars is easily used up by disruption that would be caused by the efforts that we have. Disruption to our current efforts could more than use the four hundred thousand dollars they'd be offering us. I'm agreeing with your point. I don't know if I made any sense, but with all the time that's been invested in planning on what we're going to do, you know, planning is expensive sometimes, expensive, and the accumulation of all the employee hours that have gone into doing our curriculum planning work, I'm sure is much more than four hundred thousand dollars. It just has to be more than that. So, all of a sudden, disruption of our four hundred, four, a four hundred thousand dollar check is, that would also then require us to retool our thinking. Might cost us a lot more than what we get, and so, we've got to be on time on what.
I think the community can help us. Are there any comments on this item? With no community comments, then we will call it over. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Melphell?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
No.
Mrs. C?
No.
Our next item is human resources. Mrs. Weber?
It is recommended that the school board approve and place on file the proposed capital maintenance improvement. Excuse me, I'd like to win this. Thank you. It is recommended that the school board approve a total compensation increase of three point zero percent for the superintendent for the two thousand nine-ten school year effective July one, two thousand nine. And further is it recommended that the school board approve a total compensation increase of three point zero percent for the administrative group for the two thousand nine-ten school year effective July one, two thousand nine. And it is recommended that the school board approve a total compensation increase of three point zero percent for the non-represented employee group for the two thousand nine-ten school year effective July one, two thousand nine, and I so moved.
Is there a second? Second, thank you, Mrs. Randall? Is there any board discussion? Mrs. Randall?
I should probably show an attitude of this. Would you be able to talk a little bit about the process we use for superintendent evaluation and consideration for compensation?
To be quite honest, we did this even sooner. So, I did not bring the actual diagnosis with me, but I can tell you that the, the process involves each individual board member providing the evaluation of the superintendent. The board members then convening as a group to determine the written evaluation of the superintendent, and as a result of that, the compensation package, which will be in progress. I don't know if you want to do more than that, Ms. Randall?
No, I just think, to make the point that we assess six different areas of performance, and again, we all do it individually, and then together. It's a very comprehensive process, and we also compare from one year to the next to measure growth. And I, for one, am extremely pleased to be able to support this, as well as the administrative compensation, as recommended by Dr. Earl. We just have incredibly hardworking, dedicated, professional people in this district, and if anybody who would like to can, can find a lot of supporting documentation for that. I know it seems like it's probably not always there, and we look at test scores, or you look at one or another things, but if you have the opportunity to really delve into that type of information, it's just, it's a source of pride to be associated with this district and the people that are leading it right now.
Thank you. Is there any community, sorry, Mr. Carter?
I'm gonna support the recommendation, but one thing that troubles me about this is that we're voting on it now, six months after these raises are supposed to take place, and that troubles me, because it's right in the clean budget cycle, so we don't really get to see what this is in context of the budget for the school district. Last year, we had budget problems that we solved by bringing in outside students, and this is part of that budget. And we don't yet know what the problems are gonna be, or the shortfalls in the coming budget, and this is gonna happen after that, and it's just something to need to keep in mind. So, in the future, I would like the board to consider taking care of this on time and voting for it at the time the raises need to take place, so that it takes, the discussion takes place in a cross-respective context.
I have a different understanding. I don't know, Mr. Man or Dr. Earl can speak to that, that we did discuss this within the framework of, of the current budget, and that our practice has always been to wait until we have settled the teacher contract, which is the bulk of our available funds. So, I don't look at it as being late. It's strategically how we do it, but I don't know if either one of you can speak to the fact that this is not supported in the budget information that we've been given.
The increases were built in to the budget when it was brought forward in June, certainly. And I think, I don't know about every, every teacher contract for every year, but the intent was to bring this up to the, going to after the teacher contract was set, we were ready to do that, so.
That's my understanding.
My, certainly, I can say that the administrator non-represented group, it's my intention to make sure that we have it approved by July one of each year.
Mrs. Melphell?
We do have very dedicated employees in our district, and certainly, approval at this stage is not a reflection on the work that everyone has done in their loyalty and dedication. And the superintendent has spoken on his thought process in bringing this to the board and the time before it. We also try to, as you heard, allot performance increases as well as benefit increases for our behalf, because, because we believe that as leaders, we definitely want to, we definitely want to do that as an organization. For the public, please note that this is a total compensation. This includes salary plus benefits, and if anyone would like additional detailed information, please contact our administrators or the business offices with more detail. We are happy to share as much detail publicly with you as we can. But I support this recommendation, and thank you to our staff and to our community members for their support of our school district.
Mrs. Hubbard?
I support Mr. Carter's comments, and I think he's been in a kind, professional way, making of common. We all can benefit by those type of comments. We all can improve the work we are doing, so I sympathize with his statements.
Is there any community comment on the human resources action item? Seeing none, Mrs. Fonte, which call the roll. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Melphell?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. C?
Yes.
Our next action item is student learning. Mrs. Randall?
It is recommended that the school board approve the proposal to add a seventh-grade general music course to the middle school elective offerings in order to meet D P I compliance, as was presented and discussed at the December fourteenth board meeting, and I so moved.
Is there a second? Second, Mrs. Weber? Is there any board discussion on this item? Seeing none, Mrs. Fonte, which call the roll. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Melphell?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. C?
Yes.
That brings us to student services. Mrs. Melphell?
It is recommended that the school board approve the education for employment plan that prepares elementary and secondary people for future employment, as was presented and discussed at the December fourteenth board meeting, and I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Meyer? Is there any board discussion on this item? Is there any community comment on this item? Seeing none, Mrs. Fonte, which call the roll. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Melphell?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. C?
Yes.
That concludes our action items and brings us to reports to the board, beginning with business services.
The first item on the agenda relating to the Fisher Building assessment, I wanna give a little history to where this has come from, so, six or seven years ago, I believe, the basement of Fisher, Fisher Building was dedicated. We lost the person that was leasing this space. In the time since then, we've done a decision analysis process, looking at the use of this building, also looked at, we've competed with the needs of the building, and we've gone back and forth, we've tried to lease out the basement. Obviously, we're in a section right now and utilizing part of it. The trade school is utilizing part of it, but there's also needs as with any building, so we enlisted the services of Epstein Union to do an, an analysis of the cost of this building versus the cost of maintaining this building and the needs of this building, as well as looking at the possibility of different, so.
Good evening. As Dr. Earl said, my name is Gary. We're the senior project architect with Epstein Union Architects, and I've actually been working on projects for the district since about two thousand. Epstein Union Architects is in Milwaukee. We're located at Third Board. We're just over two hundred years old. I've been with the firm for twenty-five years, and of that, twenty years has been primarily working in educational facilities, both in K-12 and upper educational facilities. As long as I've worked at Epstein Union Architects, we have been doing building reports in various stages, ever since the aging schools issues became predominant, the Americans with Disabilities Act, building code issues. It's essentially the first step that you take with a client in terms of evaluating a current asset in terms of either building nothing or completely building a brand-new building. You have to have a baseline of information, and what we find with a lot of districts is that no matter how big or small they are, most people, either on the boards or in the communities, are only familiar with one or two or three of the facilities if it's a multiple-building district, and that's because those are the buildings their children went to, or those are the buildings they've worked in. So, with these reports, these facility building analysis and fitness reports are designed to do is to give an objective analysis of a building's condition at a point in time. It's not intended to give any recommendations. It is to give you information on your asset, and it's based on relative findings through professional practice, industry standards, building codes, and current best practices of use. A building facility study can be either all of or part of these issues that we talked about in this first slide. What it does is it allows you to learn about a facility and go, take it to the next step on determining whether it's worth investing in, improving, using as it is, developing for future use and continuing it into the future, or repurposing it, or going on to another building. But this gives you information you typically don't have. What we've done with this building, and most of you are familiar with the history of the Fisher Building, it was built nineteen fifty-seven as an elementary school and served as such for about twenty years before it was retired. It was repurposed, as you are using it currently, as an administration facility and other programs as allowed by the change in occupancy. Technically, this is now a business occupancy by the building code and the locals' zoning ordinance. Every time you put a new tenant or use in this building, you need a conditional use permit to do that. So, this is no longer considered a school, even though it is built, designed, and was used as a school. It is an office building, technically. Total gross square footage is sixty-two, just over sixty-two thousand square feet. This part of the site that is technically the Fisher site is five acres, and about half of it is currently occupied now. When we did, started the survey at the end of two thousand and eight, the charter school had not yet been put in this building, neither was this boardroom, so essentially, this whole floor was not used. The exterior roof, we'll just kinda go through this real quickly, so we can, we can run through the slides and then open it up for questions, but the existing building envelope, we call it, is everything that encloses the usable spaces, and it consists of the roof, the exterior walls, and openings, and what keeps the weather out, what keeps you warm when it's cold, and it's what keeps you cool when it's warm out. The existing roof actually has been replaced once since it was originally built in nineteen ninety-one. However, the condition is what we would consider to be port of fare. A lot of it has to do, or most of it has to do with the type of insulation that was installed when it was last re-ruped. It has degraded, and it has compromised the actual covering of the roof in many areas. Exterior walls and openings, this is a brick building, which you would normally think is really great, long-lasting. The problem is that when it was built nineteen fifty-seven, as with a lot of schools, at that time, it was built quickly, and it was built for the least cost, given the best technology that was available. You have no insulation in your exterior walls. It's solid masonry, so it absorbs cold when it's winter, and it re-radiates it in to the interior spaces, making your heating systems work harder to keep the spaces conditioned. In the summertime, it heats up like a stove and re-radiates that heat into the occupied areas, making your air conditioning systems work even harder to condition. It also has no control joints, which allow the brick to expand and retract as those thermal changes go through the seasons. And with that, if you've noticed, you see a lot of cracking, a lot of deteriorated brick around the building. It's been repaired and caulked loyally over the years, but it's, it still happens because there's no relief there. There's also that dew point which goes in between the wall, bringing moisture into that building and further creating other problems with thermal protection. The windows are original to the building. They're, they're really antiques. They're insulated glass, but insulated nineteen fifty-seven meant that they're half an inch thick. They're not sealed, they're just two eighth-inch panes of glass with about a quarter of an inch of airspace in between. If you stand next to them in the winter, you can feel the frost forming. If you stand next to them in the summer, you can feel the heat rating off of them. They're as sealed as well as they can, again, with oil caulking, but that's a high-maintenance issue. However, the exterior doors are new, and new means that they're as new as when the administration building started, so they were all replaced, and which are in decent In these, these studies, you just don't have an architect walking around the building, looking at things to see if they're shipshape. We also have professional engineers assist us, looking at the electrical systems, the mechanical systems, and the plumbing systems, in which case, many of the systems that are are existing to the building. However, there are some systems that have been added to and replaced over time to condition some of the newer areas or remodeled areas within the building as you've occupied it as an administrative building. However, the core building components are original to the building. You still have the original boilers, the original electrical services, all of the existing plumbing, except for some of the accessible toilets that were created, aren't original to when it was an elementary school. What we do is, in our studies, we have a life cycle or expectancy gradient that we review all these systems with, and we've got some slides that will give you some comparatives on how old your systems are as to what's really expected for their serviceable life cycle, before you really start paying more than the system is worth or you should replace. But anyways, part of your occupancy, and I mentioned earlier, is getting conditional uses for additional activities or development spaces within this building. Depending on the type of occupancy you expand or bring into this building, kind of determines how much you have to remodel in terms of upgrading life safety systems, and that means your fire alarm system and building sprinkler systems. Right now, you've kind of been getting right around there with incremental remodeling, and you're staying more in alignment with the major occupancy of this building. However, if you have a future tenant or a future program that you'd like to move in here that might be a tipping point for some of those issues, this report kind of informs you as to what you might be looking at in terms of upgrades or costs if you chose to pursue those programs. Particular expense is a fire sprinkler system. If you had to resprinkler this whole building, right now, the existing water service to the building would not support that, so you would have to bring in a new water service or expand the one you have, plus the cost of putting sprinkler pipes and sprinkler heads in the whole building. So that's a substantial infrastructure cost, depending on which way you go, if you choose to develop this building to other purposes, or you reach that tipping point in terms of the building code. Accessibility is another issue. Right now, technically, this building provides adequate accommodations for a person. However, if you were to do a complete ADA study of this building, you would not pass it. If you look in this building, for instance, there are no audible fire alarms. If there was a person with a hearing disability that was in here, and the fire alarm went off, and they were the ones in here, they wouldn't know it. We have signage, notice that all the drawers still have door knobs on them instead of levers. The elevator hasn't been used since, or been inspected since 1985, and I would hesitate to say that it isn't compliant, and it might not even work. So that would be something that if needed to be addressed, you would probably have to replace the whole thing. So these are things that are all in this report, and again, it's information. It doesn't say you have to do this, this must be done. It gives you relative levels of fitness that these systems are. It's not, the building's obviously not falling down. You look around you, it's been very well maintained. And, you know, when I do these studies for other districts, especially if they're just schools, and they're still going to be used as schools, and they have been so well-maintained, they look just as well as they did when they were built in, say, 1935 or 1947, but there are so many things that don't work within the building for delivering an educational curriculum or as a workplace. We also look at that with these studies as well, building utilization. Right now, you're using the entire first floor of this building, which was designed as a school building, so you have really wide corridors that were designed to move large groups of students to the gym and the cafeteria, or to recess, or whatnot. Considering the number of people you have in the building, that space is very underutilized, to the point where there have been lots of storage lockers that have been built into the coat cabbies over the years for record storage. Well, it's, they've got locks on them, but I don't know if you think record storage is best had out in a public corridor, if it really should be in a secure office area or a storage room. But that's just the way this building lays out, and that's how you have made do with the way it's configured. Also, the rooms that have been designated as conference rooms aren't necessarily adjacent to their highest users, so you have departments that are located in, say, the west end of the building that use the conference room and the east end of the building 80% of the time. You've got, for instance, the business office that is spread out about halfway across the south half of the building, which, you know, ideally, a highly functioning, well-functioning office is more compact. You have offices that are, you know, carved out of classrooms that if you were to design new, would probably be about the third of the size that they are now. They are the way they are because that's the space you had to deal with. So there are a lot of inefficiencies that are identified here in terms of building utilization, and a lot of the physical attributes that force you into those decisions. I think I met with Dr. Erdl and Mr. Mack a couple weeks ago, and I had the dedication program of the building, and in the dedication program, it said that the building was built primarily of masonry and precast concrete materials because of a shortage of steel at the time of construction. Well, because of that, there are a high level of bearing walls in this building and concrete precast floors that in the era of 1957 weren't as highly engineered as they are now, so they're not as easily worked around in terms of remodeling, expanding, opening up areas. When the clinic was not in this area, they did blow away a lot of those bearing walls. I did look above the ceilings, and there are huge steel beams that are transferring the weight of the upper floor. Now, to do that requires a lot of investment. It's not cheap. I imagine a health care organization might afford that type of work better than a public school district. I can't say that now. That was 20 years ago when they did that, but that's typically something that we don't direct our clients to do with their expanding space, because you try to put your, get your biggest bang for your buck in your usable spaces, your program spaces, rather than doing structural gymnastics to make certain things work. The existing gym area, if you've been down there and walked through, where the old clinics have literally created a maze of little rooms in the gym, about a quarter of that volume of that space is used. The ceiling is actually dropped down to about eight feet, nine feet. So if you look above it, you can see all the area that isn't used. It could be used, again, as a gym or a large activity space, or it could be decked over to gain you, gain you more space, but as it is now, it's very underutilized. This chart here is representative of the findings that we made in our inspection tour of the buildings, and the green line is what the typical use lifespan of each system that we have indicated in the slide to be, and the red line is where the Fisher Building is in relative, relative life. You'll see in a lot of these, these areas of systems that the lifespan has exceeded. It's not to say that that can't happen. It happens through a number of reasons. There are certain areas that through cyclic maintenance, they maintain their usability. However, some of these other areas, particularly in our systems, it's a later slide, that, for instance, the original boilers are still being used, they're still in service. However, there have been updated modular boilers that have been brought in to supplement the heating cooling needs. So there's, there's a range of life and usability in some of these, but these primarily represent the worst case, with acknowledgement to systems that have been updated when the building was repurposed. The main infrastructure areas are the ones that have had the least updating and are the oldest, and probably as a whole, the most costly to replace in one, one activity. So there's a pretty consistent picture through all systems, and in the report itself, it addresses each, each area and goes into more detail with explanations as to why they're kind of created the way they are. Now, with, with this exercise, oops, you know, the question always comes up is, what does this mean to us, or how much is it going to cost? Well, it's difficult to answer these questions because without knowing what your plan is, you really can't give a real finely focused idea. So what we do is we just give for instances, given very conservative estimates, given the square footage and the scope of the systems that we're, that we're looking at. And this is, you know, the first, you know, we look at it in two ways. Doing nothing is going to be a cost that we can't really put our finger on, because that's, that's going to be an operating cost, it's going to be a maintenance, a continuing maintenance cost over time, and that's something that we can kind of get an idea of, but that's another study. To re, keep using the building as you're using and addressing the things as they are to improve them for continued use and to extend the life of the building for your use, depending, and this is without any specific idea of what you might do. One of the thoughts that was thrown out there was just to, you know, just bring all the administrative departments to this building, and then with whatever space was left over, either put it out to tenant space or bring other district programs into the building, depending on what could fit or what you're, you might use it for. But given that is kind of a very loose global framework to re-cost of remodeling and upgrade of the facility, would be the first remodeling of 62,160 square feet of building. And this is using current building costs. In this current economic environment, we've compared a lot of the, the cost data with both bid numbers that we have gotten, you know, over the last two years of projects and with construction management companies that we work closely with on these other, other projects of similar scope and scale. And we're very confident in the, in the costs that we were working with and covering all the different expenses that you might incur on a capital improvement cost to improve the building, and we arrived at the $6,235,000 by year $19 figure. It's a very conservative estimate, but it does, it does address all the costs that you might incur to upgrade this building for continued use.
Excuse me. When you say conservative, do you mean, what do you mean conservative? That it's low or high?
It, it's high, and the reason it's high is because you don't know which way.
I just didn't know which way conservative meant.
Yeah, it's high, because you might choose, you know, to do more in an area, and if we threw this number out there and you were low, it wouldn't be fair to climb across this. This is just, like I said, this is a baseline, you know, to work from. And then the, the way other spectrum of an analysis would be, if we were to build a new building, say, on this site, because you already own the land, to take care of the programmatic square footage that you really could work the administrative departments in that we're using to remodel the 62,000 square feet. If you were to use an efficient building plan and layout, brand-new construction of the building, we figured that you could house the same departments in 33,647 square feet. Now, that doesn't give you extra square feet to work with, and it gives you a little bit of build-out area for department expansion, but, you know, whether or not you bring other programs into the mix, you know, we don't know that. We're just saying that if you had what you have here now in a brand-new building, that's about how big it would be if you were to build new. And we have done actually a couple of new district office projects in the last couple of years of, the latest one was for the Greenfield School District. So we were able to use those comparative numbers for, for very similar space to come up with, with that number, and I think the final cost. I'll leave this up here. It's not working. I get that whole slide on there, but the final number was, the final number, no, it's not in there. The total project cost would be about $6,432,696. So, you know, between the two projects, one is less than a quarter of a million dollars, more for a brand-new building than remodeling the existing. So this is information that you use to start a conversation as to what you'd like to do with the building, what are your immediate needs for the building, and at least gives you information to refer back to to make some informed decisions.
This last quote, that includes the Church Charter School and the alternative high school?
Actually, I believe it does, because when we did this cost estimate, we already knew those were here, so I think that was, I'm pretty sure that was included in there as well, because it's relatively small square footage.
And along the same lines, your written study included evaluating the space used by the rec. department and by Bones and Grounds East. Is that included in your 33,000 square foot number or not?
Yes, it is, but I have to quantify that by saying the space used at East is only the office area, does not include basement area, which is quite a large square footage. If you brought that operation over, that would really boost the cost, it's a lot of square footage, but it does include the administrative offices for the rec. building and all that. I'll go forward to the rec. department too, because that was a big, big item for that department.
Are you ready for questions?
Certainly.
For numbers, any questions, comments?
I still have a question for Dr. Erdl. Can the tax service do an investigation of moving into and renovating the square floor for these prices?
No. I mean, I didn't, no. I don't want to throw it out there. Should we guys look at that one? Bruce, do you remember? I don't remember what the cost was. It was relatively high because of the, the exiting issues, accessibility issues, and the fact there was some, that work up there that would have happened to relocate it.
The roofing project that we have on the capital budget, is that going to be included in the model, or, I mean, I'm concerned about the systems, the interior systems, the roofing, and, you know, at which point in time do we make a decision?
Well, just to answer your first question, that cost would be included, is included in this original estimate. That's a separate issue from that item on, on your budget, and I think Bruce probably put it there because he doesn't know how long he can wait before it gets done. I am not going to judge one way or the other, but I just wanted to be sure. We addressed it in this report as a, as a line item. The roof is a roof. We're not, in, in the first budget estimate, we're not adding on to the building. So whether you do a roof now or later, it doesn't really affect the process, so that's, that's an item that can be done, can be done all on its own. Window replacements, you can do all on your own if you want to as well. The, the big costs are going to be incurred with Um, the, the big costs are going to be incurred with the, how you use the interior. If it's going to be reconfigured for more efficient utilization, if you're bringing in other programs that require special needs, um, for instance, uh, say the charter school expanded and they, they wanted to go into more of a large manufacturing style format, you'd probably have to increase ventilation if you had welding roofs in there. Um, you'd have to have, uh, storage, uh, capacity for building materials, which will require sprinkling, um, all sorts of things like that have to be brought into consideration. So that's why I said that initial, this initial estimate is very conservative because, you know, right now it's a blank slate. I mean, it's full of stuff that you're going to have to take out and it's kind of a blank slate for how you want to use it.
Does your report give us an idea, you know, if we wanted to make a timeline, if we wanted to stay in the building five years, we should do these things. If we want to stay between five and 10, we should remodel these things. If we want to stay between 10 and 15, we should go further. Is there a way that we can plan in increments like that? How much work would we need in each period?
I, I, not to not answer your question, I would say that's the next step because this, this more or less informs you what needs to be done. And with that, as you said, planning out a timeline, that's where you can pick and choose certain things to take care of that, that suit the need for how you plan moving ahead. There are certain things, like I said, that you might reach a tipping point if you wanted to bring a program in that all of a sudden kicked in certain codes that you're really not obligated or required to become compliant with. It's always nice to be totally compliant, but I'm not going to have to, but I mean, there, there are certain things that either the fire department or the building inspection department or state department of commerce is going to make you follow just because you've, you've gone over, over limit. So, um, I, I think as, as you plan out a timeline, I think you kind of take this along with you.
Do you have any idea what of the sprinkling system for this building, an estimate, subject type?
Uh, I don't think I had that as a separate line item. Let's see. Um, typically it's budgeted at about, at about a dollar and a quarter or a dollar and a half a square foot if you're just using square footage. That's not a competitively bid number, but that's typically when we're doing a preliminary analysis what we're figuring. So, um... Um, I, I figured two dollars a square foot, so it'd be about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars here on the concept, more or less. Now, that doesn't include upgrading the water system, which you would most likely have to do. I don't know if any of you knew, but originally when this building was built, it was on a well. So, o- over time, it eventually got city water, but this building originally was on its own well.
Mrs. Randall?
This roof, as I read through, really needs to be replaced in a shorter period of time and longer. Would you agree with that? If we were to stay here?
Well, if you were to stay here over time, yes, it should be replaced.
But a shorter term, you don't have a lot of timeline on this roof, is that correct?
Um, no, I, I can't speak to any, any immediate needs like such as leaks or anything like that, but, uh, having seen the roof, been on the roof, um, it is, and it's primarily around the roof edge that, that your, your biggest problem is because it's kind of pulling away from the, the, the structure and the lashings and that's where you're going to get water intrusion and other things that are going to get down into the wall. So there's a number of stru-, I won't say structural, but it's a building envelope issues that are at risk as well as, you know, getting drops on your head. So it should be, it should be meeting sooner than later.
Thank you. Mrs. Randall? We've talked about this building, um, in a, in a lot of different ways over a lot of period of time, whether we sell it, lease it. Um, now, this is one more piece of the puzzle. Dr. Erdl, how close are you to, um, presenting a recommendation and what will be included in your considerations besides this report?
I was just going to mention, I think there's, you can go back to when we had the, the building and the five acres on the market. There were some offers made and some discussions that I don't know necessarily were offered, but we had a process we went through, we looked at it. Um, we tried to get different people to come in and lease it, as I mentioned earlier. And, I mean, it's kind of like to get excited when somebody, I mean, great opportunity is coming and wants, they want to use it. Um, we talked about the rec. department, buildings and grounds being your, um, free up, free up some space at East and West. But I guess how I'm looking at it is we need to come to some kind of resolution how we're going to perform. My intention would be to bring forward a recommendation to the board at some point and hopefully tonight we're able to get some feedback. I think we have a lot of pieces of, of information. We have the facilities study, um, I think the long-range plan, we need a long-range facilities plan. Troubling part of looking at this building and, and the hard part to deal with is do you tear down a building that, I think as Gary mentioned, you look at it, it serves, I mean, I think it's fine. I enjoy coming to work here every day. It's, you know, we have good, good use of this space as well and, and put something new up for administration. I think that's, that's a hard, a hard sell. I'm putting up other than the trade school for currently, um, twenty students and if that, that expands, it's for more kids in a way, but when you look at all of our other buildings around the district, there's some issues there too. We have a lot of old buildings and all of our old buildings, um, need to be addressed. Maintained beautifully, yes, but at some point, they're going to need to be replaced, whether it's, um, whether any of us are, are here and, but at some point, we need to start planning for the future as well too, so.
Well, I guess my observation on this whole thing, you know, having been involved in it for so long is I think that what's troubling is it seems like this building is leading the way as opposed to our mission, our educational mission. You know, the discussion starts with this building as opposed to what do we want to do with our students, what do we want to do with our programs, and then what do we have to work with? And I, I think that's just telling us that. You know, so really, I think, um, we need, again, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that you're getting close to a recommendation and that you can share what other educational, um, basis for the recommendation. You know what I'm saying? I, we just keep going around and around.
Well, if we're going to stay in this building, we need to utilize the space in some way, shape, or form that we can just, you know, sit there. And that's where we have to determine what those costs could be.
And we've been saying that for a lot of things, so. I, I mean, I'm glad this is one more piece of information. But again, you know, I would like to see our mission and our commitment and, um, our view of what we want to offer our students drive the decision, obviously with the responsibility of spending, maybe to shift our focus to get this started. We all know the building is, we need to prepare, we all know it's under utilize.
Ms. Meyer?
I, I think along the lines of what is being said, um, I, I would ask the question, if, if we're going to start a major building project, what would the first project be? And what would the second project be? And I bet Fisher Construction would be, would not be on the list. You know, there's other priorities we have that directly affect student classrooms or a very large number of student classrooms. So I think if we do that exercise to list what, what construction we would do first, that will answer some of these questions and Fisher decision will kind of fall out from that discussion. Other construction could include space for administration, for example. And then the need for this building goes, goes away in that respect.
Ms. Erdl? We've spent a lot of time in the last few years on this particular building. Mr. Woodward, this is the most informative presentation that I have heard with respect to the Fisher Building. I think it's taken this few steps forward in what we should be looking at. And I compliment you in your firm on this. This has never been classified as a well-built building. From the time I came in the board, there's always been questions about the condition of this building. You pointed it out just a little bit at, at the time that it was built, there was a chart of state. That has been mentioned through the years, so I really appreciate this and I think it really gives us a great deal to think and start moving forward in a direction rather than just keep talking and looking at it. It's not, come back with some real concrete direction.
Thank you.
One, one other just of, of thought, when Mr. Meyer mentioned that, it brings me to the conversation, you know, of adding different building committees and looking at our district and, you know, some people shudder when I talk about this, but I think there's a need in our community for, for something like a fieldhouse. I think if, I'd be happy to be on the side of a fieldhouse for administrative buildings and coupling with that, um, we have sites of Underwood. I think we could have an indoor track facility, the rec. department could utilize that space. So there's more discussions that I, I know, I also talked with Gary about having their firm lead that long-range planning discussion about that, buildings and, and leading in that direction too, so.
And we have the property at Longfellow that we purchased from the cemetery next big lot, no house could go there.
Sure, we can put it there, we can put it in Underwood. I feel a lot of interest.
Ms. Erdl?
I want to ask you another question. Might be out of your area of expertise, partly to echo what Mrs. Weber said about clarity of, of the report has got me thinking on a few things. Thank you for that. Do you know what the average rental would be for thirty-three thousand square feet of business space?
That is out of my experience. I haven't even touched it.
Okay.
Just, I'll comment on that. We can't create space for leasing purposes. There's some issues with being a school building. Um, I know we looked into that. Could we create, could we create a building? I don't know that that's what you were getting at.
Us leasing space for administration somewhere?
Oh, I got you. Sorry.
And how that would compare to potential maintenance costs and if, uh, over a certain period of time, that might be more financially.
Um, I made a, a phone call to Dr. Erdl with a question on this report and he shared with me at that time something that was quite a pleasant surprise to me, is that there are building projects we could do, and John Mack would have to comment on this, but that we could fund without going to referendum because we could pay the, the payments underneath our current revenue cap and budget. Am I getting away out of my league here now or? Or, there's always been thought in my head that we need to go to referendum in order to build anything, but with interest rates so very low now, historically low, what, does that put a different perspective on thinking about having some effort to plan a build, you know, what, what our next building budget be?
Well, the way I look at this whole situation is I, I think that the reason, the main reason it's brought up is because of roof. Um, we're looking at spending at least a half a million dollars, maybe six hundred thousand on just life safety in the roof. And we don't use fifty percent of the building, maybe, maybe when you consider how big the hallways are upstairs and everything and how inefficiently everything's utilized, we probably only use maybe thirty, forty percent of the space. So we wanted to make sure that the school board had input on the decision, should we go ahead and, because realistically, if you put the new roof on and, um, you don't have to touch the windows and the other items can be put into the capital maintenance line as needed and push this off two or three boards down the road. I'm just being perfectly honest. I mean, I'm just, just being bluntly honest. But it's gonna, somewhere it's gonna have to be a draft because, um, and if you're making that big of an expenditure, I think you just need to be aware of that we're going to be spending a lot of money just to put a new roof on this, that, and we don't use much of the space. That, I mean, just think of it from your own perspective. If you had a, you know, if your, all your kids were gone and you lived just one or two people in the house, you may have a thirty-five hundred foot square, how, foot home or a six-hundred square foot home, would you, would you keep maintaining it?
Yeah, because they keep coming.
So, and, and as far as the financing goes, I, you know, that, that cost is, 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 is a lot of money. I mean, that, that's still a lot of money to look at and we have schools that are very old, but the thing with the schools was they were always, the roofs weren't put on right away, the life safety was upgraded, the electrical was upgraded and in schools, um, they still are old, but they are being utilized in a much greater capacity than this building is old.
Can you, can you speak to, say, for example, a three million dollar building and being able to fund it under the revenue caps issuing bonds? I mean, just for an example, using whatever, I mean, the, the cost of how that works.
Well, if we did it under the revenue cap, basically we would just issue, issue bonds and we'd have to find room in our budget or make cuts. You basically have to make cuts to afford an annual payment of twenty, twenty-year, up to thirty-year bond, but the rates aren't quite low right now. How much that would be would probably be maybe six hundred thousand perhaps per year to, to afford that type, that type of building. And I'm, I'm not sure we need thirty-three, six, forty-seven, you know, maybe we only need twenty-four thousand. I, I don't know until you really get into this a little bit more detail. Uh, but, you know, you, you figure somewhere around between six hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand perhaps annually to afford something like that. Under the revenue gap. That means no exceeding what we're allowed to spend.
Mrs. Randall?
Well, two things. To Mr. Meyer, um, I, I would agree with you except that I think we're, we're seeing that we are going to have to make a decision about the roof replacement. So when you say if we would do a, you know, district-wide look at, at the projects, that just wouldn't come up on the radar, and I think it would, I think that we're getting, you know, forced into deciding. But my financial question, Mr. Meyer, is, um, do we have other funds available, existing funds anywhere?
Well, we have, we have some money in at Hawthorne money when we sold the middle schools back in nineteen eighty-three.
Right.
We have approximately, um, seven hundred thousand dollars there that we can use without any penalty or aid loss whatsoever. But that's one-time money. And with the new teacher contract that we just settled, I, I haven't measured our fund balance yet, which will occur of the January fourteenth, but, um, that combined with that pending lawsuit over the county membership could make us make serious cuts going into the future. So the financial picture is not real clear right now, so the only way we could do something like this is one of two ways. You can go outside and ask people, go outside of the revenue cap. I'm not sure that's the way to go, or otherwise we would have to, uh, we could reduce some of the costs maybe with some fund balance to take out lesser amount of bound, of bond issue and lower our annual payment, maybe a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Those, those one-time funds are always such a challenge because so many of our costs, you know, are, are ongoing, but when, you know, if, if we could use it for a major repair or a major upgrade, um, you know, at least part of it. You said there's how much about?
In Hawthorne?
Yeah.
This is about seven hundred thousand dollars. And actually that money is under an old rule from PPI that they grandfathered us. And actually, that money is under an old rule from PPI that they grandfathered us in, and more times they've forced districts to spend that, but there is no, it's exempt from the aid formula, basically, which we're negative on, so if we spent it, we wouldn't be penalized by spending that money.
Any other board question, I haven't? Is there any community comments on this report? Thank you very much.
Does Mr. Johnson have anything he would like to add to this report?
My only comment would be that it's a pleasure to work with the building regardless of what avenue we take. I'd love to be involved in new construction, I love remodeling, and I'll do my best to maintain the existing facility if that's an issue.
Very well, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next report is a tax bill discussion. Mr. Mack, do you have a minute?
Excuse me. We had to make an explanatory note. I requested this item, and the request was not for the purpose of discussing whether the tax amounts were wise or unwise, or appropriate or inappropriate. The purpose was to discuss how the amounts were communicated to the voters, what happened to the, to the tax bill, that we come to some understanding about what the city did and what the schools did, so we can figure out a way to make that more clear to everyone.
Thank you for that. Mr. Mack, do you have a minute? Should we take a brief recess, or are you about ready?
For?
Your presentation.
Oh, I'm just opening it up.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We're ready whenever you are.
I'm just, 'cause I had to my own drive here, I didn't, I didn't bring a, um... Right, let me just start with this, 'cause there's been a lot of questions on a tax levy, and how it, the school district portion appears on the city tax bill. And first thing I just wanted to go through was some slides, so they could see that what we submit is actually the percentage increases that we submit to the state and to the city. If you look from this year, from the year before, this is '08, '09, '09, '10, the tax levy increase was 5.42%. On the tax bill, it was showing up as, and I'll go to that other page, as 5.4, I mean, it was showing up at 7.2%, around that, on every really tax bill. And I want to show you last year's too, and I'm not gonna go through this slide unless you wanna see this. Those are the only ways that the, the school tax levies can move. But if you look '07, '08, '08, '09, the same number was 4.91%. So, you have 5.42%, basically, this past year, and 4.91% the year before. How is this different between the, the school district then, and what appears on the tax bill? Well, there's some factors that the school board does not control, and when we submit our total dollars to the city, they, they take that dollar amount and, and pass their really based on their assessed value. And there's a few items here that go into the assessed value that the school district has no control. And I'm not gonna get into explaining every one of these in detail. I think if you wanted to know, that you can ask the city. I do know what these mean. The first thing is, the city has TIPS, and they're tax incremental finance districts. And basically, they're a way that a city entices development in communities by paying for utilities, and roadways, and infrastructure, and taking out bonds on those. And then, those new entities that are developed in there pay off the TIP district, and after a certain amount of time, the, the TIP is paid off, and the tax base of the city grows. And as it grows, that means that the taxes are spread amongst, amongst the larger base, thus lowering, lowering taxes for everybody. In the past year, I'm not, I'm not too sure how the, the bond issues work, but the TIP levy for the district, for that was allocated to the school district, went up $200,000, which pushed our tax rate up higher. Do we have any control over that? No. So, that's something that the city of Walertosa basically is controlling, and, and they vote on, their, ultimately vote on whether to pass the TIP or not. The levy base is like I talked about, the assessed value, that's completely controlled by the city, and the assessor values each home based on their opinion of comparable sales of that type of home in the city of Walertosa. The equalization A decrease is built into our tax levy, but that's part of the 5.42 and 4.91. I wanted to put it on here, though, just because that, so people understand that the main reason our tax levy did shift up is because the state has not been funding schools at the statutory required rate of 67%. Every time they drop that, it just passes the buck onto local entities and pushing the rates up. And there's been some cities or on a state that have had double digits. West Bend is a good example, I think was 11 or 12%. But then there's another big one that, that, that kinda goes unseen, and that is the state aid allocated to the city, which is controlled by the state of Wisconsin. Can the city control that? No, it's basically like our equalization A. And that went down. So, when you can put all those factors together, um, let me shift to that other bill. You can see on the screen here now, the first one is, this first bill up here, this is the same exact property, you can see the assessed value are 259.7, 259.7. And our levy increase for that year, it says 3.8 over here, our levy increase was 4.91%. Okay? And there are a number of factors, but the main reason, if you look at this over here, you can look at the, in '07 to '08, the state aids allocated to the taxing dis- district here went up approximately $838,000, went up $838,000, which is gonna push our, our tax rate down on the assessed value when on a tax bill. That's just the way the system works. Did the state ask for more, I mean, did the city ask for more and get it? No, this is how much the state allocated, basically like our equalization A. It would be easier if the state just gave this, you know, a piece to us to allocate and, and show it, so that it could match more closely to what actually happened. Now, here's the same thing in '09, and the same exact assessed value, our levy increase was 5.42, and now it's showing up at 7.2. And if you look at these state aids here, this is going down, I'm sorry, I, I, when I go back to this one, I'm sorry, I have to actually, this, this number here actually went up 400, 400 and approximately $419,000. But in the current year, the aid went down $838,000 allocated to school, which is gonna push this up, way up again. So, you had a difference between the two years there, from almost, one going up 419, and the opposite going, happening in second, they're going down $838,000. So, the point of all of this is, you're using a different base, and how it appears on the tax bill, I can't get this information when we pass our levy from the city. They, they don't have all the information yet, when they're gonna, when we have to submit our information to the state, because then we submit our information to the city, and the city is still getting the information, doing calculations. I could estimate it, which I did a year before, but it's not gonna be exact, but I could, I could try to estimate it if you want me to each year. But the example I gave, and I don't have it with me in this presentation, but the example I gave on a $250,000 home, I believe I said the taxes were gonna go up to about $119 or $120, that was right on the money, because I used the same base, I used the same base. So, this percentage here, that you're seeing here, is not going to match our tax levy, because we're using different bases. And those bases are affected by different aids allocated to different entities. The city gives different types of aids, they have the TIP district, and they have other elements that affect the, the tax rate that you see in the tax bill. But what I show on our tax levy is absolutely correct, and 4.91 and 5.42, it really wasn't that much change from one year to the next. You know, it just so happens that this went up to 7.2, obviously, no one called last year because it was 4.91 to 3.8, so no one's gonna say anything. But as soon as it goes above that, because we had an unused situation, but we're in a recession, and the state gave less aid, and that's what really forced that number all the way up. So, the only other thing I could suggest to make this more understandable for citizens, 'cause I can completely understand the way they would feel, looking at, say, hey, wait a minute, they said it's looking, you know, 'cause they don't know the total dollars and how all these calculations are being done, is that we put some type of insert, maybe school district paid for it, and let the controller of the city just explain how they get the calculation from our percentage to the percentage that shows up on the tax bill. Mathematically, that can be done. So, I mean, that's, that's the story. I, I can't go any further than that, just to say that what, what the school board passed was what we did indeed raise the levy. As far as the way it played out in the tax bill, we don't have control over that piece of it. That's, that's the city, and the city would also say that the state shorted them on aid, which is true. That, that happened there too. So, with that, any questions?
Well, my, my problem with the tax bill was that it was not clear to the homeowner who gets the tax bill, which elected officials are responsible for which dollars on the bill. And as a school board member, I have tried to make it a practice to refrain from commenting on city business. But when the tax bill leads the homeowners to email and call the school board members about components of the bill that are a result of votes by this, by the city council, or the result of votes by the legislature, then, that puts us in a, a spot that is, is just not good for effective, efficient government. I'd be all for some insert in the mailings that explains who called over what dollars, so that the correct people are talking about it, because I don't wanna comment on TIP districts. Just like I hope the older people don't comment on financing decisions based on open enrollment or various other things we do. I mean, as citizens, certainly they can, but I haven't put the time into understanding the economics of TIP districts that the city council has, has, has done, and I should not be commenting on that, just wouldn't be responsible. Yet, board members get the phone calls and get the emails about those components of the tax bill. And I think that needs to be corrected. And whether, I mean, as you said, in some years, it makes us look better than we really were, and other years, it makes us look worse than we, than we really were. Either way, it's, it's not good.
Any other board comment? Mr. Comment?
I think I was calling you, I wanted to ask a question. This year, if I'm understanding correctly, we had about one, from what the levy we passed is 5.4% increase, and the property tax bill showing 7.2, that's about 1.8% increase. Does the city have a choice as to whether they're going to bill the homeowners for that extra 1.8%? They get less money from the state? I understand that correctly?
I, you know, the way the city does their calculation and portion on the tax bill with the aid and everything, I think, I don't know the whole legal system behind that, or what they have to do. I, I don't, I don't know that, just because, just, just like Mr. Meyer's comment, I don't comment on what they do, they don't comment on what we do that way. As far as how they have to do that, or what's legally binding, I really don't know. Because one of my questions is, when I saw the way the actual calculation was, when it's has a TIP, and there's a levy that goes with that, a big piece of that goes to the school district levy. Obviously, nobody here voted on those TIPS. I mean, I go to some of the meetings, and I explain to them how it affects our aid and things of that nature, but as, as far as them allocating it to our, our line, as you see, and there had multiple lines when they do this calculation, and I think that's what you're alluding to there, but I don't, I don't know exactly what they have to do, or if there is any leeway in how they could show it. And that's why I was saying, otherwise, if they're gonna keep doing it the way they do it, that you're gonna put some type of calculation in or letter explaining how the school district rate gets changed from this to that type of thing.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Meyer?
I think your presentation is good. Thank you very much for sharing those details. If we believe as a board, it's important for our citizens to know how the taxation rates show up on the tax bills, my suggestion would be for the superintendent or the administration's next meeting with the city to bring up this point of some kind of a joint communication with the tax bills, when they go out to explain things like TIP districts and the school district. So, I guess I would ask the board if, if that would be okay, if the superintendent opens up that communication with the city on our behalf.
Are you making a motion?
I can just respond to that. I think that's a good idea.
Just a direction as a conclusion to the presentation. I'm sorry. Mr. Meyer, did you ever have a? Any other board comment? Is there any community comment on this presentation? Yes, please approach the microphone and state your name and address.
My name is Lisa Hunder, I live at 2225 North 16th Street, and I just wanna comment, that was a wonderful presentation, and the fact that I know this now makes me feel a lot better. I'm glad I was here. And so, I really think the idea of insert is a great idea, and I just wanted to put that forth.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mack. Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. You have a question? That brings us to the superintendent's report, and we'll begin with the personal school health science and technology contract amendment. But thank you all for your questions. Standing there for two hours. Director Earl, will you?
Yes. Jenny, can you, I suppose, I think it's interesting. I'm going to try to provide some context, and I think many of you are probably aware of the history and the discussion that we've had over time on this. The only thing that's going to be asked of the board to take action on is the amendment in the contract. What I, just to hand it out and give information that I have, this plan that's been in the making for some period of time. I recall even last year when we had this discussion, there was some discussion about, does this board take action on this? Or is this administrative responsibility? Walking away that the, it is the administration's responsibility to staff the schools into sub-sections and create them. And after the last, last year when I mentioned that there will be a plan for the future of the charter school, I put together a plan in collaboration with the governing board that, and feedback from various constituencies, that takes us out seven years. The, the intent of this plan is to make sure we're maximizing the usage of the space at Wilson. And some of the data, if you look through, I have it listed on the handout as well, that I think supports this. And I, as we've started with the charter school over a couple of years, and to see how it played out, how it worked and how it's working in Wilson, I think now we have some sufficient data to really develop a plan, plan obviously that has flexibility built into it that will carry us forward in the future. I think one word that I just use is instability, whether it's the governing board, its other parents at Wilson, the Wilson community. We keep operating in this era of unstableness and instability. And each year we keep coming back and saying, okay, here's what we're going to do. And I think we need to lay that out, and my, my plan, I think, does lay out, it says, in particular, here's how we're going to move forward on this. There's a timeline that was followed, as I mentioned, last year there was a discussion. Also, this October, I met with leadership from the governing board and asked them to bring a recommendation to me on facilities, if they were looking at different facilities and for the growth by December. I did receive a recommendation that included a move to this building. And after, after that, and after, it was coined it as a listening session at the Wilson, at Wilson, and hoping to discuss more than just the charter school, but I think the discussion was around that relationship between the charter school, co-facility, and Wilson School. And with this building, I, I am not able to come up with a management plan for Wilson without the charter school. And I think we go back to the purpose of when the school was moved in, charter school was at Wilson, and with Wilson School in itself, to maintain the viability and vitality of that school and have options for parents out of the Wilson community, but the district overall. Last week, the plan was also shared with the governing board, brought back, and some changes made up until today. And I know I met with Mrs. Gates and Mrs. Casey today and finalized some things that I put into place. If you look at the data in the past, the number of JK students that have entered Wilson, from '03 to '04, we have 20, '04, '05, 21, '05, '06, 19, '06, '07, 22, '07, 20, '08, '09, 22, '09, 10, 22. I feel rather confident that we can operate with one section of the charter school. And what the plan, you look at the plan, it carries us out seven years, and ultimately we have the same number of sections of the charter school and same number of sections of the Wilson School. The applications, I think, we have enough applications over three years. You can see that the application pool is enough to do that as well, sustain it. I think this last year, there were 32 applications, but there was absolutely no advertising or marketing, and I think people were, because we knew there wasn't going to be schools. I think also important, when you look at the statistics of the current enrollment at Wilson, and of Wilson and of the charter school. One of the things I'm looking at also is trying to maximize resident enrollment in all of our schools, and I think this is the way to do it. We still maintain the option, we maintain the opportunity for Wilson resident students to attend the school. Currently at Wilson, we have 37% of the students that attend Wilson are residents of the Wilson attendance area. 40% are open enrollment, 3% Chapter 220, and 20% are inter-district transfers. And the trade school, the charter school, 29% are residents of the Wilson attendance area. 11% originated as open enrollment, they can't just open enrollment to the charter school. And 60% of 35 students are inter-district transfers. But ultimately, when you look at it from, if we go back to even the financial aspect of it, and the study from Virgil Krause of maximizing the usage of the space and having students in there, I think this plan does that, and it does it over an extended, extended period of time. It also allows for, for the flexibility. For example, if we don't get enough applications in a year that we're expanding the charter school, that we can also expand, increase the number of students at the, in the Wilson School itself. So I think this maintains, not only maintains Wilson, but it also, I think there's a market-driven aspect to this as well. It's a choice aspect. I think we've, we've seen the charter school and Wilson operate effectively together in a co, as a co-facility, in a co-facility. And I think we can continue to grow that, I think we can have the best of both worlds. So that is some, some context behind where the recommendation, which leads to the recommendation from the governing board to an addendum to the contract, of changing the contract from senior first grade to fifth grade to SK to the fifth grade.
May I just say in additional presentation prior to opening questions?
You can open it.
All right. Board members, do you have any questions or comments on this report?
Well, I confess it's rare, or I'm happy that it's rare, but I think tonight, the superintendent and I disagree. And first of all, it seems that what this action item really is about is the plan to have half of Wilson building be the charter school, and that it would be more appropriate for us to vote on that concept and then have subsequent decisions on the enabling steps. And here we have an enabling step that's in furtherance of a plan, and the board hasn't made a decision on the plan. I have a question as to why it is that if this concept of the school of health science and technology is a success, why it is not being adopted as a program within the school district? And we allocate half of the building to the program rather than allocate half the building to this other legal creature or entity where it's governed by a board? And I say that with a great deal of, I guess, I have made a point of not commenting on the operations of the charter school. That, and it's not really known widely, whether I disagree with what they're doing or agree with what they're doing. And that's on purpose because I thought they were entitled to a chance to do what they believe in. And then, and that's what innovation is about, I'm not going to need to agree with everything that's being done. But in this case, I, you know, I, I have that basic question. And now, if, if we are going to have a discussion and a decision on this concept, then I do need to comment, and I do need to end my silence on what I think about what is happening in the charter school, and whether it is appropriate for that type of operation to have half of one of our buildings. And the loss of control that it entails, and the, and what it, how it affects the rest of the school district. For example, then there's the assumption that residents will gravitate towards Wilson and the open enrollment students who are the chairs, not the particular people. But over time, the open enrollment chairs will gravitate to the other age elementary schools. So what essentially, as I'm understanding it, we would be doing is filling Wilson with residents and dispersing the Wilson open enrollment students to the other age schools. Now, I emphasize, this is not particular individuals, but over time, that is where the open chairs would go. And, and so I think we need to consider that impact. Are we tonight discussing a decision to hand half of what the Wilson building to the charter school or, or not? I don't want to jump over, you know, overstep the agenda here.
The agenda item is the addendum, but obviously, the presentation has brought more information forward, which I think is subject to discussion.
Do we need the agenda, broader item? Because we've noticed the topic.
I think it's part of the same topic. And this is not an action, I just want to clarify, this is not an action item, it is a report, which is scheduled to be on later agenda. Are you prepared to comment?
I'm prepared to comment on charter school, but I, I'll see the floor for now and hear what others have to say. I do have comments on the substance of that particular charter school.
Ms. Ryan?
Well, it's going to take a little time to look at this and to figure it out. I am glad to know that it's being presented with, because last year, when there was a request to expand, everybody said, well, what's going to happen next? So I think like the reason we're seeing this is because, yes, it is going to have to be part of the discussion about whether or not we start an expansion at another level. So some of the questions I have of this particular plan, first one that stands out is the applications for the charter dropping so much from '07, '08 to '09, '10. And is there something about that?
As you can speak to that, we didn't promote, in other words, we didn't use any promotional information about the registration period for the charter school because if we did that, knowing that our space was limited, we felt that that, actually, I'll use my own words. I felt that that would be misleading to parents, to give them the impression that we would have that additional space for those students, when in fact, we didn't. So what you're seeing is strictly word of mouth, the applications that came through last year, with the understanding that the charter would remain at three sections at that point in time.
So what this looks to me is, is a pretty implicit commitment on both parties, by both parties, to stay in that building and to make room for you in that building. That, that, you know, that's, that's not going to waver.
No, I think as, as the governing board, we feel that it's a good plan. It may not be our ideal plan, but it is certainly one in which the charter school can continue to operate in and carry out its mission and outcomes and goals that we've agreed to in our contract with the district. I think, you know, we are in our third year. We've proven to be a very viable choice for students and parents in the district. We have high parent satisfaction. And I think, you know, we have kind of muddled through each year, thinking, oh, you know, how many were going to get the first year? We made it through that first year, and then the second year, we were able to expand it a little bit more and offer it to other people because there was certainly a want for that. And so I think the, the governing board, in acting in what's best for the charter, I mean, we certainly would welcome the opportunity to have a permanent residence. And I think this plan affords us that, and also aids us in our, in our sustainability and being able to offer this to, to other students who are looking for a different choice in their education path.
Because it certainly does, like I say, show a firm commitment from the district. And I'm not sure, other than what you just said, you know, that the charter absolutely wants to be there for some time. No. So I think that's implicit if this was plan put together by both of you. The other piece of that is, the contract is up in one year?
Two more years?
It's 2012.
Okay. And so this reaches into an area of time where we technically don't have time.
I think this is part of the uniqueness of, of being instrumentality. You know, we can't just, if we were our own entity and had our own budget and made these decisions, but there's some congruency that exists between decisions that are made between the governing board and the district. And I think that by, by entering in on this, you know, we as, as a charter school are proceeding in good faith and, and want to remain a viable option in the world.
So you might have missed people. So one question would be, should this also be an amendment to the contract? So that, that we know that space would be utilized. You know, obviously, I think it's, I think it's probably very obvious that there would be a question about, you know, if we, if we start limiting the number of sections at kindergarten level, and then either the charter school moved, or did not get the enrollment, you can't really backtrack. We've already lost the kids at the JK level. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Can I speak to that? Um, with the instrumentality construct, the governing board that, in effect, has that appropriate, and I use that term in the confines of how the Department of Public Instruction defines the role of a governing role, advisory capacity, but ultimate decisions are made at a district level. The implication, that's why it's Dr. Erdles who is presenting this plan to us. That's ultimately, as the leader of our district, it's his responsibility, and he does that for each of our schools. To tie that contractually, when there, as we know, exists fluctuations in enrollment and resident populations, I think would frankly make it more difficult for Dr. Erdle to use appropriate judgment in making those decisions. I think also, again, in my mind, as an employee of the district, that is where the decision-making should lie.
Yeah, and I totally agree.
To a contract, I think.
Well, yeah, once, once we have a contract, and once we say we're in the charter, and, you know, and your contract says X number of students, I totally agree that. This is a very appropriate thing to do, just to bring this as a basis.
To be clear, though, the, the contract itself does not specify a number of students. That came from the grant. That came from the grant.
Right.
But I, I'm just saying it publicly because I think over time, sometimes there's been some misconceptions about what exact language is in fact in that contract.
Yeah, I, I just, I, we haven't seen this, so, you know, we're, I just, I just, and I think this, not this plan, but a plan is what we can ask for. And so, I don't know.
Hold on, I just, in response to that, I think it's important to point out the plan wasn't made up out of a blue. And I think it's this, I mean, personally, I've been in discussions with a lot of other people have gone through and said, what if we did this instead? What if we did this instead? Um, what if we moved Wilson or moved charter school out of Wilson? What's that going to look like? What's the open enrollment? I mean, you can see what we've been doing for the past seven years. We've been adding a section of open enrollment to that Wilson school because actually some of these numbers reduce after JK, so.
I just wanted to go back a step on the agenda notice as a board process item. We noticed a report, um, an addendum that was not actually attached to the agenda. Um, I don't know, was that document actually provided to the citizens here at the meeting today? Or was it just this document? What was provided and handed off to the citizens?
Oh, it's that document.
It's this document.
Yes.
But the actual addendum?
No, that's in, it's in the agendas.
It's in the agendas. Oh, the public agendas, but it wasn't posted on here. Is that correct?
I think it's one, 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 yeah, that should be on there.
Okay. My mistake. I didn't see it initially and thought it wasn't posted, but, um, that's good. So going on to the actual addendum, which is more of a short-term issue, adding kindergarten to the charter school, what kind of preparations will the charter school need to make for that? Is there curriculum involved? Does that go into, uh, will it be kindergarten only classroom or will it be a multi-age classroom? How will that work for the school?
It will continue to be multi-age. However, the, the groupings of the multi-age sections will be K one, two, three, and four, five.
Okay. And is, is there a need to develop curriculum or is the curriculum already developed that the students will?
It, um, there will be some obvious need for curriculum development. That is something that the charter school teachers are prepared to undertake.
That's all.
Sorry, Mr. Dragan, do you agree?
Yes, sir. Very basic question. The original, once upon a time, we've, we've got a copy of the quote, amendment, junior kindergarten was included in there and then we got a clarifying email and I wanted to just make sure I followed that bouncing law correctly. And it seems clear from the handout that came as well, but, um, the amendment should refer to senior kindergarten classes mainly at the charter school?
Yes.
There was not, there was not necessarily a type of crap layer or whatever, uh, when junior kindergarten was included in there at one point in time. That's, conceptually, that's not in consideration. It's just a senior consider, senior kindergarten.
That is correct.
Right.
Question about the addendum as well. Um, and it's a little hard, I mean, I have to work hard to understand this plan because we only got it at the meeting itself, so it's kind of complex. But from what my numbers are, if you're having an average of 20 students per class, you're still going to have 60 students the next two years in the charter, is that correct? Three, three sections, three years. Stay the number of students.
It has the potential to stay the same, however, if the addendum is, is passed by the board, that does give the charter school the capability of bringing on additional students as, as senior kindergarten age students. So with the, with the configuration of the classes, that will increase charter class size. So under the, the description that I just provided for you or how those classes will be constructed, we'll actually be looking at a four or five class that's rather than being closer to 20 students would be closer to approximately 29 at the fourth, fifth level. So that would mean an overall increase of, in that particular classroom of 10 additional students. Because we have a current section of third grade this year that's a standalone section within the charter that has 20 students at the third grade level. So as they matriculate onto fourth grade, that would create a fourth grade group that has 20 students and then our fifth grade group, which has nine.
Okay. I, I have to admit, I'm somewhat dubious as to the need for a kindergartner to be in a science-based educational environment. So what is the educational reason? I mean, and you apparently have enough applications to have that many extra students without starting a senior kindergarten. So what's the educational reason behind these?
Um, I think there's a couple of different things that are, are driving this. In part because we are noticing the added benefits and you'll have to bear with me because I'm speaking as an administrator talking about two very different curriculums.
Okay.
But we have seen some really, um, additional benefits with the implementation of the treasurer's curriculum at the, the kindergarten level in terms of having those resources available, um, jolly phonics being another example as such. And having those resources available at a younger age, definitely, the feedback that I've been getting from teachers is that it, it's a positive experience, it's improving the exposure to which our specifically kindergarten students have to literacy. And I think knowing that that is a viable option since the, the charter school currently does not have a curriculum at, at that level, it also would then give them the ability to provide enriched literacy experiences to their students as they move through the grades. So that, that's among them. The, the other reason just being maintaining that flexibility and the dynamics of the multi-age structure. We have children reading in junior kindergarten, so we better be providing opportunities to continue to sustain that growth.
And just so I understand it correctly, the number of students in the classes in the charter school may fluctuate.
Yes.
But for the next two years, you're still going to have three, three sections.
That's correct.
And that's going to be in two classrooms? Is that what it says here?
Yes. We are, um, the, the tentative plan based on, um, the, the addendum is that a kindergarten classroom will be, I'm using the term repurposed, it will actually for that two-year period of time, house both the kindergarten first grade cohort and the second third grade cohort. It would maintain the two teachers, but it would be a class with the population or the potential with the addition of senior kindergarten of having 40 students. And that is, the kindergarten rooms are literally the only rooms in the building that have the size that can, um, support that two teacher, two classroom kind of, I guess, structure for lack of a better term.
And so I completely understand this. Are we, I guess the bigger question, I guess I don't have a problem with the addendum. I mean, I can see the educational value of maybe having a kindergarten first grade or second grade and so on, but the problem with the way this was presented tonight is that it starts us on a path for our organization at Wilson that once we start, we almost have to continue. And I think what other people have been talking about is that once we start the plan, the way the plan is written goes into, into years for the charter school for which we do not have a contract yet. So it's almost obligating us for a contract for those years because we can't afford it. Like this around, so we can't go backwards and be able to hold some weight now. So, so that, that's a larger question, but as far as the addendum goes, I mean, I can see the value that a senior kindergarten, you know, slightly changing to make up for the students and keeping the same three sections.
What else is coming right now? I would like to say, I've been looking at this as an addendum for the last two years of contract. Um, as far as I can tell, it doesn't change the number of students, well, I shouldn't say it, it doesn't change the number of sections. Um, it doesn't change the school which is co-housed, it's simply expanding your classroom, your, your class base downward one level for the next two years of contract. It is complicated, but actually we received this document tonight. Um, but what we're really going to be voting on is changing the last two years of contract.
That's correct.
And again, whether I completely understand the value of having kindergartners in a charter school is really sort of beyond the point.
I understand.
I don't see any reason not to allow this because it doesn't change anything really. You have the same number of teachers, you have the same number of classrooms for the final two years of your contract. Now, this other thing is another discussion that obviously we tend to have, but I don't know that that necessarily needs to be decided before I can decide how I would go on this agenda. So that's where I sit. Yes, Mr. Dragan?
Well, we saw from the cohort data that senior kindergarten enrollment lives with the building or, or lives with the district for the entire period of K through five. So, well, we saw that, that senior kindergarten enrollment in the district is a, is a very good indicator of, we don't lose those kids. Net-net, we don't lose those kids, that the number of kids in our senior kindergarten, the number of residents will be pretty much close to the number of kids as those kids move up. We will maintain that number up through fifth grade. So things we do to senior kindergarten will have a lasting effect as a district. Now, we hadn't run any statistics on whether it has a lasting effect on the building, so I, I can't really conclude that tonight, but just to note, we did see a lasting effect of, of what we do in senior kindergarten on enrollment as that cohort moves up. Um, the, the, the second problem I have is really financial in that the, we're investing in a curriculum model and a teaching model that I, I don't think has shown itself to be financially sustainable, that the curriculum is based on purchases of expensive equipment. And it has not been shown that those expenditures can be sustained as the years go by. So we're investing in a curriculum model, we're, well, we're, we're not actually, we're allowing that to move into our building when, you know, for example, the sponsorship of the medical college was lost and where's the money going to come from to buy all the, all the equipment that is needed for this curriculum model? Second, the teaching model itself is expensive because it use, it, it's heavy in field activities that use licensed teachers and that kind of experienced activity could be just as well done in a rec department type program. And we're going to see, I believe, as time goes by, as we try to tighten our budget so that we have money for other things, you know, capital expenses, for example, that we're going to need to standardize our curriculum, our curriculum, and we're going to need to put as much, so what I would call experiential activity into the rec department where we don't have to pay licensed teachers. And so this model in this charter school is equipment-heavy and licensed teacher-heavy beyond what we spend for our other elementary schools. Now, you might say, well, this was all said to us at the beginning, why didn't you say something, Mr. Dragan? Well, because my policy, my individual policy was to be silent because this was a charter school within the confines of two to three rooms and that was as far as it was going to go. And if they could figure out how to fund it, then they'd survive and if they couldn't figure out how to fund it, then they wouldn't and the experiment would be over. But this is not an experiment anymore when you're talking about moving into half of a building. And the, the, the financial track record is not there to show that they can sustain this.
Mr. Dragan?
To your comments, Mike, about the SK, I, I would see an SK program for class and this program and incentive to come to this. I would, I, I would hope that would increase residents enrollment. Um, you know, parents, that's a time when I'll be here on making choices. So I, I would see, I would look at that a little bit differently. Um, and Mrs. Keats, when I was talking about a contract, I had not asked you my question as well.
That's okay.
Not in the contract that will have X number of sections, but that the charter school will be here in Wilson's school for five years or six years, that you're not going to move anywhere else. Because obviously we have, um, I have, you know, great interest in keeping Wilson's school open. And I think that this plan is meant to do that. Um, historically, we've kept it open with open enrollment. That's been a fact. Um, now, I think part of what we're talking about is, again, revisiting our commitment to our neighboring schools, which we know is strong and community-wide, but looking at maybe another way of doing this. So I, those are, that's, yeah, I just.
I, I think in the same token that you were just saying, what we see, the trends in kindergarten, I mean, we don't lose those kids. I think that's the, the same contact we were going with in, in adding an SK to, to the charter and it, it just, it seems like a natural flow. We have not entered into that, that addendum lightly. We have been talking about it for quite some time. I think the addition of, of the kindergarten K through five building would make us a complete, a complete school. It, um, it allows the children to enter in and to experience and start engaging in self-directed investigative learning, being self-motivated learners, um, getting introduction into the technology and science that is infused throughout the day in the curriculum. And it just really gives us an opportunity to implement our curriculum and our expectations and thus reaching our goals, which we are contracted with the district to meet in, in our contract. And the addendum is one of those instances where without that, the approval of that, it, it makes it hard for the, the charter to, to be responsible for its outcomes when we don't have control over, over such decisions as, as an SK. And I just wanted to speak also to, to the money aspect. We were awarded money, grant money from the other government in the first two years and we were to spend that wisely, buying and purchasing equipment for the students and the classrooms and materials. And now we are in our sustainable year where we have no money and we have planned accordingly and we are able to function this year without any money because of the planning that we did in the first two years and the first, the smart purchases that we made. And, and I would have to disagree with your, your field activities perspective because we just did, um, a no-cost science experiment that we looked at force, push, pull, gravity, drag, and balance. And we used that with a pile of snow and slugs. And those are the types of hands-on, non-money type activities that really are a part of our curriculum and, and really drive the kinds of experiences and, um, simple learning outcomes that don't need a whole lot of money. But we are being innovative in which we're all about teaching those kinds of activities.
Dragan?
Dragan, what will happen?
Dr. Earl, what will happen, I mean, in your experience of training with SK, and Mrs. Keats also in the traditional program, what is the, do you have an understanding of the desire in the community for the traditional SK program? I mean, what has it typically been? Has it been the 20 students roughly in SK at the resident?
In the class size?
Right, enrollment. I mean, what, what kind of enrollment?
Resident enrollment.
Resident enrollment for SK historically in the traditional program?
Oh, at Wilson. I don't have that. I assume it's somewhat, I'm not going to assume.
Okay. It would help me to know more trending data and to get a sense of the market-driven opportunities since I actually reside in this resident district. I think I have a really good feel for some of the things that people are interested in, but I don't, I mean, it may just be subjective and not really objective with a lot of those numbers and research behind it. I can see a real big plus to having multi-age classrooms, starting to take some of the charter school format into the traditional education in some regard. We have some competition there. We have several schools who market in the general area with three, four, and five-year-old programs. We have a small attendance boundary in that area anyway because of the medical college, and that is by design with the boundaries and geographic boundaries of the district. So, to me, I see it as okay to be a small school. I see it as okay to offer a public educational opportunity in that resident district. And the question for me is, how best to do that, and what is really the demand by our residents? Are some of our residents, are they, would we be better off? And in what format would we be better off to offer that public education opportunity? So, that's kind of where I'm at with configuring, and I wish I had more background, like I said, on what is it people want, what kind of history are we seeing in the traditional program? Is that or is not meeting our needs and our kids' needs? I wish I had more information before making this ruling. And maybe that's what your strategic plan is going to flush out, because I see huge opportunities. I mean, I see that attendance area, still people talk about losing a middle school. You know, we could think about expanding into the middle school. I just read an article in the Sunday paper about Wind Lake and, you know, expanding their public education opportunities. And I just think our citizens, not just in this residential area, but all over Wauwatosa, could benefit from these kind of experiences if we could get our arms around it and really think on that level. But today, I mean, I know you want to expand, so I have to decide whether, you know, I would agree with adding a kindergarten classroom, but I can't make that decision unless I know what is the history on traditional SK enrollment. And if I had some information on what the residents desire, and I don't know if we can gather that in the next couple of weeks.
And my information would be anecdotal. I would base it on the number of telephone inquiries, I guess, number of school tours that I give. I, just to speak to your point, is in any elementary school in our district, majority of parents, first-time parents, who are looking for that senior kindergarten experience because we only offer a half-day, four-year-old kindergarten experience, as you might understand, when parents enter our district, they enter with the intent that their child is not going to move from school to school except for the way it's currently constructed, whether they move on to a middle school and move on to a high school. So, majority of parents who come to visit any of our elementary schools really want to start a JK and see it through. That's where the majority of our parents, and those where they can work the half-day construct, will do that as well. I think sometimes, particularly because there are so many choices locally near, you know, Wilson's School specifically, if it becomes an issue where because of the employment demands within a home, sometimes parents can't work that out satisfactorily for themselves, so they opt to do something else for 4K. But once they're aware that there's an all-day senior kindergarten program, they like to find their school and they like to have their children remain at that location for the duration.
Well, I mean, some of these schools are offering full-day 4K programs that parents really like. And, I mean, I know we haven't talked about that as a board, but I just see this as a larger discussion of, you know, where do we want public education to go in our district, and what kind of innovations are we willing to try, you know, to make those offerings to our population? I mean, we already have some starts now with, you know, some of the charter programs, but...
Dr. Earl, we focus, or address this question to you first, and part of, I guess, part of my lack of certainty in reacting to the conceptual plan that you've put forward is based on my lack of certainty about what happens next with charter school, and it's because we haven't gone through a five-year cycle yet. When we get to the end of the five-year cycle, what's the next natural step with the charter school program? Is there a new contract that's to turn into at that point in time? Is it another five-year contract? Is it a lesser contract? I would guess that the new contract doesn't carry with it the same kind of funding that the original contract did, but can you shed some light on that? Any questions about that, Mr. Meyer?
They will come back, and I would assume it would be for a five-year contract that part of it's up to the governing board. I would assume that they would have the five-year, there's no federal dollars tied to it, and they would have to, and I think it's going to look somewhat differently, they're talking about funding. And I don't know that it's going to be a whole lot different than what's currently in place, but I would probably suggest that the governing board, if there's more specifics in it, better laid out, not necessarily adjusting what has to be in the contract, or more things. I think the school board would help, the school board be more comfortable, I think we've learned through it, a couple of different circumstances, so we can take what we've learned from it, and certainly rely on legal consequences as well, making sure that it's a good contract. But as I look at the timing of it, there will probably be some discussions next year around this time, start that way.
In one of our discussions, Dr. Earl, we talked about how having a plan and then having a strategic plan for the charter is going to allow the charter to, the charter government to have such a collaborative partnerships within the community and go after some more time to meet the requirements and those types of financial additions. We were, there's a miscommunication in one of our purchases, and we were short some curriculum materials, and, you know, we had, and then let's donate, donate $2,000 in more specifically for the rest of the curriculum, curriculum pieces that we needed. And so, I guess with our 5-1-1 status, that grant law allows us opportunities to go after these additional monies. And I think, you know, like a long-range plan should well, a vision for, this is how it might look, is really going to be more positive and more convenient and more than just a kind of big plan.
Another question I had was what kind of community, school, neighborhood, bits of discussion have taken place to date with respect to the conceptual, just the concept of the plan that's outlined on the table of ten months?
I think at the meeting, I was telling that Wilson, I shared some thoughts about being cohabitating and getting more specific in how it would look. I also have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday with any parents that are interested or members that are interested, I would listen to talk more about this as well. Wednesday, please.
Can I add to one of my questions? There are possibilities for grant monies past, when we get it after five years, you could still be writing for grants, am I, did I hear that correctly?
I think there's just, I mean, wasn't Obama very committed to the charter school movement? And I think, you know, there's always talks of monies and the work, you know, and monies coming through for high-performing charter schools, which we are considered to be one of those. It's all very uncertain, but there are certainly monies out there that, I mean, any, whether you're a charter or not, you know, if you have the time and the desire to be doing that for your school, you could be made.
I see charter schools becoming more of an interest. It can read different material that comes out, not only from local but national. Charter schools are out there, and it's always, what I see, a very positive direction. And I think the society that we live in is, the inland is just endless what we can be offering to it. And I think our families expect that.
So, this conversation's changed a little bit. I said I'd support the addendum if that doesn't change the contract or the numbers, and that's fine. But we've gotten to a bigger issue, because I know it would have been trouble if we didn't have a plan, because I ended with this request, now that we have a plan, it's also trouble. So, I'm going to ask a question, and I'll see where I'm going. I know the third year of the contract, we're supposed to review the charter school. Has that been initiated yet?
It'll take place the end of this year.
What I was going to suggest is that if that were moved up, we could discuss that review and other issues that we've been discussing tonight at the same time. We're all on the same team, but we're not apparently on the same page on everything. So, I think it might be helpful to have that review in front of us as we discuss some of these issues. And the reason I say that is, Dr. Earl, you're proposing some changes that are in your role to propose as far as configuration of the school, but in doing so, at some point, the board is going to be forced to approve the contract because Wilson can't survive unless that contract is in place to keep the charter school the way it is set. So, just a quick question. So, one option would be to have the review done, discuss these options, and I know the contract has a provision in it for, you know, and then three years, actually extending it beyond five years. So, we could have that discussion about this plan towards the end of this school year, and the board could at that time essentially elongate the contract to encompass this plan if the board moves it at that time. That way, you're not making decisions that tie the board's hands as far as contracts that may or may not improve in the future because the building's already gone in a certain direction. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying, and there are some charter schools that go back up to the third year and go to a new five-year contract after two years. I mean, that has been done, so you know there's decision-making time for parents because if it's not approved, people can make decisions on what they're going to do. But I need to make it clear that if the board, for whatever reason, we get into a situation where the board does not approve a renewed contract, there'll be a new plan that we'll prepare for them as well. This is, this is taking one path. The path has to change, and obviously, that's going to be different. So, it's, and as we get to that point, I'll make that even more apparent, but I don't want to tie the board's hands on anything, especially on the board's side. That's the board's role to approve or not approve that contract, and I would be very careful not to put the board in a position to do that. And by the time when the contract does come, the board will not be in a position that we can't put something else in place.
Observation about risk for the viability of Wilson as a neighborhood school. If the board goes down this route, down this road with this plan, and something happens three years from now, funding is lost, maybe there's some schism that develops on the charter board, we know that boards have their ups and downs as time goes by, and for whatever reason, the charter school fails, is, will the board be prepared to rescue that program in order to save the school building? Because you created a situation, I think, where because of the size of the charter school relative to the total operation of the building, that if the charter school for any reason fails, and the possibilities I laid out are two that I think are, you know, credible possibilities, is let go, is you lose funding, or you have some, you know, schism on a board, you know, is school district of Wauwatosa prepared to swoop in and rescue that building? And to somehow maintain ongoing operations of what will then be half of the building? Because if you lose half the operation, you probably lose the building. And that kind of gets to the question of, should this be a program and not a charter school, if it is successful? Would you be willing to turn it into a program, a magnet program, for example?
Well, sitting here right now, I'll give you an answer saying, I mean, I think there's critical components to the charter, and that's the mandated parental involvement base. I think it gives that, obviously bureaucratic stuff they get to avoid to some degree. But I think there's critical components. If it's not renewed, I would have a plan. If something goes bad three, four years down the road, I will be prepared to make sure that, and I think it's been clear, this community wants their schools open, and it's my job to make sure that there's viable options for, for parents and for students. And, I mean, if it happened today, I would be prepared to come back with a recommendation to the board next week. I think it's something that's my responsibility to bring to that throughout, and I would feel comfortable I could have something that the board would support. If charter school went away today, the whole concept of the charter was gone today, I would have a recommendation for the next week. Maintain that at Wilson.
A viable plan, keep the going.
Yes. But that's not necessarily my question. It's my response of saying what I would do, but things change over time. But I, I mean, trying to, I guess, bring some comfort over to the thought process that goes into this as we move forward.
Well, and just another question for you. If the community has a demand, obviously, there's a demand for a program in some way, shape, or form. How quickly can we turn around and be a flexible organization to be able to deliver a multi-age model, if that's what parents are looking for? Can we deliver more science and curriculum, or technology and freeze curriculum? How flexible are we as an organization to do that? Because we know it will be beneficial to student achievement. You know, how can we as an organization, as a board of education, plan for that kind of thing in any way, shape, or form? Because there's clearly a demand here, 71, 61, 32. You know, I, I just, you know, I don't know if there's more of an opportunity out there. You know, I'd like to go to the citizens and say, hey, if you could craft your own unique customized program, what would it be like for your child? What are you interested in? You know, I mean, we've done that a little bit with surveys, but now that they've seen Tosa's School of Health Science and Technology operating, they've seen some results come forward, what do they think of that? Now, they, you know, overwhelmingly, there's another charter school that we trade then, there's been some positive reception too. You know, what else is there?
I think people that have strong feelings for this school express their feelings through applications, whether they apply or not.
But I think that our model today in our traditional program is slow to respond to our students' needs. And how is this board of education going to change that in any case? And how is this board of education going to change that in any case? I mean, that's what I'd like to discuss. And then talk about how do our facilities match up with that? Do we even have the people we need, the resources we need?
Mrs. Brown?
And one quick question. Excuse me, why now? Why is next year a good year to add the JK, or excuse me, the SK?
That's a interesting question. And I think a couple of things that I'd like to speak to as the administrator. Obviously, what's driving this presentation is the fact that it's a co-facility, that there's shared space, and there needs to be a plan. I think out of courtesy to all the family populations who call Wilson home, they need to be in a less reactionary mode and be able to plan and prepare for how that space is going to be used. I think we can all understand that on a psychological level, that's what people need. They need to know to the best that something like that can be predicted, that there's a certain expectation moving forward into the future. Without the language change that you see in the addendum, when we do our open lottery process, which is always at the same time that we do open enrollment, which is February, I'm sure we could put queries out about the possibility of interest in SK. But I'm not sure that that's something that, in terms of timeliness and in terms of planning, I, we can really truthfully speak to until we give parents that lottery option. That's one thing we found, that particularly when we, the first year of the charter school, we did know what the neighborhood response would be, what the, you know, families who call Wauwatosa their resident school district. And so in part, that's why you saw some of that language in the grant proposal, keeping those numbers within a range rather than specifically indicating what they were. And so this language in the addendum exists so that if we're going to, in fact, over time, see the charter school grow in a measured way, we have to be able to say to parents, we're offering that opportunity. Or if that's the decision of the board, that that's not something that they want to approve, then, you know, again, that has an impact in terms of the future growth. So that's, I think, why now.
So I'm just gonna go quickly agree with what Mrs. Spee said earlier. This addendum as written, I think, is a reasonable step at this time, so.
I'm feeling very uncomfortable, and maybe I'm not understanding, but the charter school parents have worked very, very hard to come to the point where we are. There's a definite interest, I'll repeat, in the community for charter school. I personally can't wait for the third charter school, and Dr. Earl knows what that school is going to be. It's gonna be for the arts. And I don't want you to go away tonight feeling that we are negative and don't see the work that has been put forth. I think we need to keep moving. And the word in my head is trust, trust. I would really like to see this moving.
With that, I think we will open this for community comments. And we had another superintendent side of it, but I believe there are some individuals who may wish to make a comment. And I won't make them wait to sit through our policy discussion. So if there's anyone who'd like to make a comment on this item in the superintendent's agenda, please approach the microphone, state your name and address before making your comment.
Hello, my name is Brian Boding. My address is 2802 North Seventy-first Street. And first of all, I'd just like to say that I really made Wilson our home. It's really become a birth destination for my family, to the extent where-
And what is your address again, please?
Twenty-eight oh two North Seventy-first Street. I have three children. One of them is enrolled at Wilson. He has enrolled open enrollment. And I have a five-year-old and also a one-year-old. And this school has been a great asset for us, and to the point where I've dedicated a lot of my time to the school. I have contributed to the communication committee for the school. I'm a landscape architect, and I've completed a landscape master plan for the school, for your charge, because I believe in this school, I really do. And beyond that, I also put in countless hours doing these actual communication projects without the whole committee of people. And also went to the extent of becoming a Cub Scout then leader for Wilson School. So the point I'm trying to make is I really like this school. It's a great school. I love the people that are there. And with that said, I'm not against the charter school at all. My main concern is, it's more of a personal concern, that I'd like to continue to have my, rest of my children enjoy the, you know, the school that my son has, my oldest son has enjoyed. What I fear is with the expansion of the charter school program, that's going to not allow my younger children the opportunity through open enrollment to continue to be involved in the great school. There's a few things that I'm concerned about. What is going to happen with the students that are currently open enrolled in the school? As the charter school program maybe continues to grow, are open enrollment students gonna be basically ousted from Wilson? That's one question I have. As far as allowing my future, or the other children to get enrolled through open enrollment, are they going to be allowed to get into Wilson? You know, because we're talking several years down the road from my one-year-old. Is that opportunity gonna be gone? What would happen if the traditional school environment, the traditional school classroom, you know, could come down to one classroom for the traditional classrooms, you know, SK through fifth grade, and suddenly, there's a spike of residents in that community where you would exceed the twenty-student capacity? Would then the charter school shrink to allow for the students that wanna have that traditional school environment? Or would those students have to be shifted to another facility? It almost appears to me as if the real direction for Wilson is for, eventually, for it to be completely chartered. You know, taking steps, you know, as we go to make it one facility that's all a charter, in one building, where it no longer functions as a neighborhood school. That's a fear that I have, that I just wanted to express. There was also some discussion about the fact that some of the classrooms in Wilson aren't large enough to accommodate the curriculum that they're trying to accomplish. I'm not exactly sure how the charter school system works. But I was here for the whole meeting, and I actually heard, you know, the presentation about this building itself. There's lots of space here. If you really wanted to grow that charter school, I just noticed, I think it's charter school of the trades. Was it at the east end of this building? What if this building becomes a facility to allow more charter schools? To, you know, you've got the space, obviously. Just some of my comments that I wanted to bring up to the board. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Lisa Hallinger, twenty-two, twenty-five, North Sixty-ninth Street. I've been a citizen of Wauwatosa for thirty-eight years, my entire life. And I've watched the school district go through a lot of changes. I just got when Dr. Earl came to Wilson, I was there at the meeting. I have a child in the charter, a child at Wilson, and a child at Washington. So I'm spread out right now. But I comment to that fact that when I was in grade school, my mother fought for community schools. There's a picture of her, but we still have, in those times, hanging socks up all over our yard. Save our community schools, S-O-C-S, socks. Okay? So schools are really important to my family. And I understand the whole concept of the community school, that Wilson is a community school. If it's not a community school, if sixty percent of the kids are open enrollment, that's not a community school. People are being driven there from all over the place. So I'm like, if you can't sustain a school where a classroom of fifth graders of twenty-seven, only thirteen are actually residents, you know, I, that makes me uncomfortable. And I just have to say that. So the whole open enrollment process frustrates me as a taxpayer because I feel like I'm, you know, living here, putting my money towards the school. I know it's a great opportunity for people who don't live in this district. I would suggest they move to the district. That's just an outside comment. But also, my mother, my Hawthorne closed, where I have a bunch of students from Jefferson, because we are in the Jefferson School District, marched them all the way to Longfellow. Longfellow's too far. So the closing of schools, I think, is also a bad idea. So I understand keeping Wilson open is good for the families in that district. And I see the charter as something that's gonna help make that happen. The addendum SK, I think, it's, I think you kind of, I've seen a lot of positive opinions on that. I'm appreciative of Mrs. Weber's comment on wanting to keep this positive because I was feeling a lot of negativity. I was feeling a lot of, just negativity. And I want to hear positive statements. I wanna see this school district move forward. And then my last comment is, as to the sustainability of the charter, I'm actually working with the board to try to create a grant writing committee because we will be dependent on grant money. We're not, we don't wanna be dependent on the school district. Except for the teachers in the facility, really, we need to sustain ourselves. And we're already looking to write grants to get the money for a future curriculum. We can't do that when we don't even know where we're gonna be. You know, how long are you gonna be there? Where are you gonna be? We don't know where we're going, and that's why we're asking for this plan. And a lot of us are very happy with what this plan has to say. So let's say, thank you.
Is there any further community comments on this agenda item?
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Tracy Puckelbowski. My address is twenty-four, twenty North Eighty-ninth Street. My children attend the charter school, and I'm also a member of the governing board. I just wanted to say thank you so much. I appreciate the fact that all of you had open minds when taking on this charter school. It's been such a positive thing for my children and my family. When my kids went to preschool, we did not choose a JK in the district. I was looking for something different. I was looking for multi-age. I was looking for more individualized learning. And then when I heard that you guys were looking at an elementary charter, I followed it very closely. It was thrilled when it started. And when my son became a first grader, I enrolled in Edless America. His name was picked in a lottery. And he has just flourished, and my daughter has just flourished. And to be honest, if this opportunity wasn't available for my family, I would probably go outside the district, which saddens me because I am a resident. And I think more children in the district deserve an opportunity to attend this school. I really hope that it does have a chance to grow. I think the parents at the school are so committed. I think it consumes a lot of our lives right now, and I want it to have a future. I'm not in it just for all the kids attending. I'm in it for the long haul. I really want to see this be successful and have children be successful in this program. I really think that we do need a plan to pursue student outcomes. We also need a plan so we can go to partnerships and grants because when I was looking and applying for a lot of these grants, you know, they want a plan. They wanna know where you're going, where you're gonna be in the next couple of years. And we can't give that to them right now. And it's, you know, we really have put a hindrance on where we're going financially right now. So anyway, I just wanted to say thank you. And I would consider this in thoughtful consideration.
Any further community comments? Thank you very much. This will be back on the agenda at the twenty-two, twenty-third. That brings us to revising school board policies.
These policies are recommendations from the old to, for changes to our current policy book, mainly legal updates, language cleanup, and different changes that have been brought to the legal process. So brought forward for the session.
Questions or comments? It's right.
Mr. Chaney?
Yeah.
To the extent that these policy changes impact personnel and community resources, would you, do you have any interaction with the old people? Do you understand where they're coming from with the recommendations that they're basing these changes?
I do have any interaction with them, but I understand, you know, where they're coming from. As a matter of fact, some of these changes are, when I first came on, there were legislative changes that required updating the policies. And Dr. Earl said, don't worry, the old will update them automatically and treat it as would they have. So some of the policies, the ones that have more substantive substantive changes, in particular, the FNLA policy, are legislatively required. A lot of the other changes are really minor cleanup and language changes that I think the old is doing their own self-monitoring. I suppose if you wanted, I could walk through each policy, just kind of point out what I think are major substantive changes, what I think are really, a lot of the cleanup changes. If you'd like to do that. Okay. You know, I'm gonna go through them in the order I think that are in the agenda packages, starting with policy thirty-one, twenty-two, or forty-one, twenty-two. This non-discrimination policy, really the major change is that it distinguishes the two non-discrimination policies between professional and support staff. It's really a cleanup, non-substantive change. Our policy book is dividing such professional staff policies and support staff policies. It means we have two policies for every conceivable informant situation. The language change that was added distinguishes the two non-discrimination policies. Turning to policy thirty-one, sixty-one, and the corresponding forty-one, sixty-one, on request of medical reading absentee. This really clarifies the superintendent's authority to basically assess someone's fitness for duty. It's consistent with language. It's probably limited a little bit by language in the collective bargaining agreement. But it reiterates the superintendent's authority to request a fitness for duty exam of our employees in case we put them out on leave. So really no large substantive changes, we're just cleaning up, a cleanup policy.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
There's a paragraph where you talk about employee being examined by a physician. And if that isn't satisfactory, a second physician is, and then they can do a flying third one if they're different things. But I noticed down below there, when the recovered staff member is coming back, proof of recovery is satisfactory to the superintendent to interpret that. I'm just curious as to why you wouldn't ask for a medical opinion similar to the same procedure direct above to determine that employee is medically able to medically fit. quit if their job is likely to discontinue, to prove they were coming?
You know, I think that's a harmonization with our family medical leave policy, is that when somebody's out on an absence, you're not required to, you're not allowed to delay their absence and ask if they're those second and third medical payments. So people, this is a harmonization with FMLA rules. I mean, ahead of examining the issue per se, but yeah, process is similar.
And the paragraph, the last paragraph on that page, I'm trying to be sensitive when the board, public or employee access is restricted to the board. And I notice you're taking out the paragraph where the staff member can request an opportunity to take care of it before the board. I'm just wondering why that's taken out.
It was a recommendation by the OLA to take it out. You know, as was pointed out, we don't have a back and forth necessarily with the OLA. They provide us these policies, a review for kind of further substantive changes. You know, in my recommendation, I don't know that we want this particular type of issue getting appealed to the board, and the medical issues are very tricky and need to be handled rapidly and with care on administrative level and not necessarily aired before the board on a regular basis.
What that situation ultimately covers, by other agreements procedure? Or dispute resolution procedure?
It would be because there's a corresponding section for medical leave, there's a contract, and chances are that you get aired through agreements procedure.
So is it still on that?
It's good. And there's also a complaint procedure for staff regarding policies, which is actually referred to, we'll get to our last of the long staff, under issue resolution. It cross-references staff issue resolution policy. So it's really multiple avenues to explore. Moving on to our important, our important anti-harassment. The recommended changes are really, really minor here. The changes are just updating the statute, references policy.
Can we reiterate?
Can we reiterate?
On page one.
Oh, read, read. Read. And that actually is, there seems to be a couple places on the anti-discrimination language, when the revision, revision eight left out of word, to pre-lead one of them that's from Wisconsin State Statute of Rights. So far so good. I missed one comment on the first one, which is that under our equal funding opportunity policy, they misreference the age to, the title was the ADEA, and that'll have to be fixed with the OLA. We'll fix that. Sorry, I jumped backwards. The major substantive change is to obtain a medical leave policy. This is basically to comply with two major provisions. One is our state law revision to allow domestic leave, domestic partners access to state FMLA leave. So we'll see a revised definition of spouse, including domestic partner. And then the second major change is the care to a service member whose employee's parent or spouse, child, next of kin. And the reality is that both of these provisions are provisions that we've been following all summer. When we use our four, our notice of FMLA rights, our notice of FMLA rights that go out would include this as an option. So if someone wants to request FMLA leave, they, they already have access to this. So this revision bringing the policy up to date with the law and current practice. But it's, you know, one of our more substantial revisions.
Mr. Conrad?
Yeah. So the question on definition, I'm just very curious, it's pretty important, but in the middle of that, on page 214, defines parent. Says parent includes a staff member's spouse's legal guardian. What does that mean? Who is that person?
Who is a staff member's spouse's legal guardian? It would be, if, if my parents had passed away and I had a legal guardian who raised me, and now that legal guardian stands in a parent relationship to me, that person would be a parent, my spouse.
So you're married, there should be a legal guardian?
Well, yeah, you need the guy, they, they were your legal guardian. They were, they're always going to be your parent. They're always going to be your legal guardian. You start that relationship. Yeah.
And just so we can clarify, for anyone who may be watching, we are required, are we not, to cover qualified domestic partners?
Yeah, that's correct.
Is that an option?
That is not an optional coverage for the district.
Thank you.
It's now a matter of state law. And, you know, in terms of interpretation, this means this extends to state law benefits for state law FMLA leave rights, but not necessarily federal FMLA leave rights. So it will be in different periods governed by the two different laws. Those changes are, of course, carried through on both policies, 3430 to support staff, and then the corresponding 4430, the same changes applicable to professional staff. Turning to the employee anti-harassment policy, 3362, again, we find the word "key" was left out, and we've updated statutory references. Under employee anti-harassment for professional staff, the word "key" is again left out in the 4362, and statuteary references were updated.
Just to stop you for a second.
Sure.
We jumped from 4430.01 to 5517, at least my pack does.
But I did not headline order in the same order that you did. So, turning to 5517, the student anti-harassment, the word "color" as a protected category was left out. And I believe the staff, it's a grammatical change on page four. And we, yeah, page six, the reporting procedures for special needs and younger students, is something that's covered under the administrative guidelines, so that can be moved through the policy. And then obviously, the ever-changing statuteary references again in the policy. But that was a relatively minor adjustment. Now, is your next policy 9130?
Yes, yes.
The 9130 is a revision to the issue resolution policy. It really adds a sentence that clarifies that staff member complaints are referenced under corresponding issue resolution for staff member policy. It then clarifies or directs the administration that we should provide people with a copy of this policy if they have an issue that needs to be addressed. And then clarifies on page three, that the intent of saying that the board may be in closed session to discuss the issue is only intended when it's consistent with state law for open readings, which I think was always the intent, obviously. And now is our re-vested the anti-harassment, 3363?
Well, Doc. It's currently to what we have.
Oh, your policies.
Um, 33, ours are in numerical order, so 3362 is earlier in our pack.
Maybe I have two copies.
Yeah, because you did start it.
I made that double copy. Yeah.
Does anyone have any additional questions?
I did. I'm trying to find the hand pass box looking at some.
Sorry.
So I haven't really got that. I'm just curious, there's a difference between two similar policies for professional staff and support staff. I'm just curious as to why that was different in one area. Um, 3430, 01, professional staff, page seven of 14.
Uh, is that the OLA? Your 2430?
01.
01. Page seven?
Page seven of 14. Okay. In the center of that paper, it says certification by health care provider. The first paragraph underneath that, actually, um, it talks about requiring certification from a health care provider for a serious health condition. And that's where that leaves it. When you look at 4430.01 for support staff, page eight of 13, I'm mixing things up. It talks about this, again, if you lack the validity of certification, you can ask for other medical teams. And I'm just wondering why, why that's different, if I can correct me. Have you seen anything?
Well, I'm not sure if I, I see a difference between seven of 14 and seven of 13. I'm, I'm not sure that I see the difference. I'm reading a bit of a quote, though.
So you're right, early down in those.
Now, there is a, a major difference in the policies that I guess I, I didn't point out in my quick review, which is if you're looking at 3430.01, page 10, there's additional language regarding the authority of the superintendent in dealing with instructional staff to require that they may not on leave through the end of the semester if they believe that there's a disruption to the instruction. And that actually is current practice. It's part of the administrative guidelines. It's also just part of the federal law regarding FMLA leave in terms of authority to keep instructional staff out when it would cause disruption at the end of the semester. That's different. That's because of a difference in the way we keep treating instructional staff versus non-instructional staff, which is allowed by federal regulation. That should be the only major difference.
One final comment. This is about issue resolution policy 913. This is directed to the board. I'd like you to think again, and I'm generally going to keep bringing this up, that when a complaint rises to the level of the board deciding whether they're going to consider it or not, that we allow citizens to make at least a ten-minute presentation on the circumstances behind the complaints and the remedies that they're seeking. We've had other hearings where having a personal presentation made a difference in how we evaluate the evidence and how we look at the situation. And I think being elected representatives, and, you know, you shouldn't restrict access to the board. Though it's not in the policy at the moment, I'd just like you to consider allowing citizens to, to suit a complaint all the way to board level, that they at least be allowed to stand before us and just give a ten-minute presentation of why they're making the complaint and what they would like to come out with. And after that, if they can leave, we can just have the discussion as it is described in the policy.
Is that being remembered for discussion?
Well.
It would not be, not tonight. It would require, if, if whatever wishes to make an amendment to anything, that we have to know it's eventually. Mr. Conrad?
I agree. With Mr. Conrad's statement.
My comment is that we'll change the entire policy, the nature of it. Not the entire policy, but it'll change the, so the statute, so it will require us further discussion.
How would it change substantially?
Well, the nature of the policy, you know, there either is an issue to resolve or there isn't, and that is the priority of the board to determine prior to that. And if there is an issue, not as, that makes sense. But anyway.
We'll point out one additional argument, is when, we talked about this before, there was some worry that if we have that in the policy, you know, because there's too many complaints that come before the board, not that they're doing a decent decision, but the complaints that, these types of complaints come from the board level seem to be pretty rare. So I don't, I'm not concerned that having that in the policy is going to make citizens all of a sudden file 10, 20, 25, 20 complaints to the board and take up all that time. I just think it's a fair thing to do. Let people have their say, and then we go into, you know, sexually, so that we decide whether they want to hold 20 or not. It's just a way of, you know, we'll hear probably some of the same information that we get in written form. I think it's just put the personal touch on it where you evaluate the evidence or the situation that you're getting from the person that's presenting, I think. It's fair for us as elected representatives to allow the citizens to have access to it. Do you mind if, by the way, say, I agree with that reasoning as well? And it's consistent with what I believe is the case that when non-board members are making a case on something to the board, they seem to be more successful in communicating the case than when board members are bringing a case for someone to the board. And along your thinking, there, there is some more, they're closer to the issue they're describing. It's not secondhand. It's more real if the person who has the issue is the one, is the one doing, talking to us. And so we, of course, we hear it then. That's my opinion, so.
But did it get complicated when we talked about, could we ask questions, say, I mean, is that at a point in the discussion before when we were getting stuck on that point? I mean, would this be a forum where the person just comes up to the microphone and states their case, and then we decide in what forum we will consider it?
Could I point a board? Yes, or no? Go ahead.
Okay. I, I think we are discussing an amendment.
That's what I was just getting to.
So we need an amendment either next night or our next meeting.
And what I was going to say was, if, it sounds to me like there may, this, this policy will be presented for approval as written. If there is going to be a substantial amendment proposed, I would ask that whoever is going to do that bring it in writing at that time. And then I think that all these questions will be a topic for that discussion as to what, I don't know what the amendments might be, if there's going to be one. So I think we're getting off into an area that we shouldn't probably be in right now. And we can discuss that, when if an amendment is brought before us.
Would you see it as an issue that was brought earlier to me, and then I could send it out? So would you, you would have time to consider it?
I think that's acceptable. I think that's acceptable. It would be, I'm just making a procedure, and I think that's acceptable to send out if someone knows that we're going to be filing a, or making a motion for amendment. I believe it would be acceptable to send it out ahead of time.
But haven't we, other times can we discuss policies when they're first presented? Sometimes the board gives a direction, and you rewrite policy substantial before it comes back.
Well, in initial proposal, yes. But this is a policy that already exists. That's the difference. If it was, if this was something that was coming in force for the first time, then that would be, would be acceptable. But it already exists. And so I think in order to do a substantial change like you're talking about, it has to be done through amendment. With all of that, is there anything, any other comment on the proposals, what you meant, I'm sorry. Yes, these are my notes. If not, then we will have these back our next meeting. If someone does, as I said, wish to make an amendment, we'd like to have that disseminated very briefly, if that's Dr. Earl. Otherwise, please bring him in writing to the next meeting. Otherwise, please bring it in writing to the next meeting. And I believe I want you to adjourn this morning.
A question, we were asking, break our calendars.
Oh, yes, that will be done after the meeting.
After the meeting?
Yes. Well, we're discussing scheduling.
Okay.
Um, I, I should, I guess, offer time for community comment. It is now 10:35, and there are no members in the community in the room. So, is there a motion to adjourn? A second? On the papers?
Aye.
Aye.